Called the meeting to order. This is the February twenty-sixth regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board for the City of Tarpon Springs. Mr. Vesey, would you lead us in the pledge and the invocation, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I came prepared today for an invocation. I'm sure that all of us noticed how lovely the weather was. It appears that spring is here, also judging from the amount of oak pollen in my pool. Spring also brings the season of Easter. And in the season of Easter, it also brings Lent. And of course, with our special community of Orthodox, Lent would bring Sarah Kosti, which is fasting. It's also a period of self-denial, self-examination, almsgiving, and maybe personal reflection. I believe that we all could use some personal reflection, especially as we move into this new year. Thank you.
All right, before we get into the purpose and mission, there's a couple little things first to welcome our new member, Susan Swenson.
Thank you.
Who is over here. We're happy to have you with us and look forward to your contributions. Also, staff would like to comment on the new agenda portal access system that we're all being forced to use tonight.
Just wanted to find out, was everybody able to access the portal?
No.
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't have access to a computer.
I'm having some trouble with the internet.
And I do have a couple hard copies if somebody really needs one tonight. But if you do need assistance on that, we can, you know, if anybody wants like a screenshot tutorial, anything to walk you through that, we can assist you with that going forward. This is our first try. We think you're really gonna like it. We like it. You'll be able to just pull up the individual documents. It will be very, very fantastic for the public because instead of this big PDF, you know, three-hundred-page PDF packet, they're gonna be able to click on documents, look at the stuff, and I really think it'll be great. So hopefully, if everybody has it available, I'll go ahead and give Mr. Kuzkutis a paper copy. Anybody else want a paper copy?
I'm having some issues.
Okay.
All right, and since we have a number of members of the public here, I'll briefly go through our purpose and mission. Thank everyone for attending the Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board. The purpose of the Planning and Zoning Board is to conduct public meetings on the items that come before it. The Planning and Zoning Board has reviewed the evidence in the agenda packet for each item on the agenda this evening, including the application materials and the staff report. The board will consider that evidence along with any new evidence or testimony that's provided at the public hearing. The board will consider all the information provided to us at this hearing in accordance with the quasi-judicial procedures by which we're bound. I will ask the city attorney to explain these quasi-judicial procedures at the appropriate time. This board uses these procedures to judge whether the application meets the intent of the city's adopted comprehensive plan, future land use map, and whether the application conforms to the city's currently adopted land development code and zoning atlas. The board will render a decision on each item in the form of a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners who will take the final action on the item. The general hearing procedure for each item called by the chair is as follows: staff presentation first, followed by applicant presentation, affected party presentation should there be any, public input, staff and applicant rebuttal, and finally, board motion, discussion, and vote. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Kuzkutis?
Here.
Mr. Vesey?
Here.
Mr. Zimbellas?
Ms. Frences?
Here.
Mr. Rockline?
Here.
Ms. Early?
Here.
Ms. Swenson?
Here.
All right, that brings us to a brief announcement of a change in the agenda. Application twenty-two dash one twelve, Ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash oh one, which was an amendment to the Land Development Neighborhood Conservation Overlay, is deferred to a date to be re-advertised. So that one won't be addressed tonight. That brings us to the approval of minutes of previous meetings. Tonight, we're addressing the May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three minutes. I need a motion in a second, and then we can discuss if we need to.
I'll go ahead and motion to approve the minutes.
Can we, or is there any discussion that anyone has on that item?
I just have a quick question for council if I could. I was not present physically for that meeting, but I did have the opportunity to review it the day after. Should I abstain or?
No, you should still vote on the item, and you can always do that even if you're absent for the meeting that it pertains to because you're approving it as a public record of the city.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussion, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Swenson? Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Frences?
Yes.
Mr. Vesey?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkutis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right, that brings us to item number five. They're trying to make me say quasi-judicial more times than ever before without screwing it up. Quasi-judicial announcement and swearing of speakers.
Mr. Chairman, the matters before the City of Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board are quasi-judicial in nature. In a quasi-judicial proceeding, the board's function is to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances. This is a legal decision regarding the application before the board. The board may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues arising from the application in the applicable code sections. If the evidence demonstrates that the application meets the criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to grant the applicant's request. If the evidence demonstrates that the application does not meet the code criteria, then the board is required to deny the applicant's request. Any and all persons providing testimony at this hearing are required to do so under oath. All persons testifying at this hearing must give their name, address, and must indicate whether or not they have been sworn for the record prior to proceeding with their testimony. All testimony and questioning at this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the application pending before the city's Planning and Zoning Board. Any board members who have disclosures such as ex parte communications or conflicts of interest, please make your disclosures at the beginning of the hearing. The following is the established procedure, which will be followed at this quasi-judicial hearing. First, staff will present its testimony and evidence regarding the application, and the applicant will have the opportunity to ask questions and cross-examine city staff and any city witnesses. The applicant will then have the opportunity to present their witnesses and evidence, and the city will have the opportunity to cross-examine the applicant and any of the applicant's witnesses. Then, members of the public opposing and in support of the application will be given the opportunity to provide their testimony and evidence. Finally, the applicant and then the city may present any rebuttal testimony and evidence in a closing statement for summary. Then, the board will close the public hearing for consideration and a decision. At this time, anyone who's going to be speaking at this hearing, please stand to receive the oath. Raise your right hand. Do y'all solemnly swear to tell the truth on the matters here before the City of Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board this evening? Please remember to state your name, address, and indicate that you've been sworn prior to proceeding with your testimony.
All right, and it does mention down here about the speaker time limits. I think we've got enough going on tonight. We do need to stick with those time limits.
Yes, those will be four minutes each.
Right. All right, that brings us to item number six on our agenda, Application twenty-three one twenty-two and twenty-three one twenty-three, Resolution twenty-twenty-four oh six. It's a conditional use approval and site plan approval for property located at five-twelve, five-fourteen, five-fifteen, five-sixteen, and five-twenty Island Drive and five-twenty Hill Street, and this is a quasi-judicial item. Does the staff?
I have to make an announcement before the presentation. I have represented the applicant in other matters, not in this particular matter. I don't know if that would put me in a position or disqualify me on this particular case.
In accordance with the Florida bar rules, would there be any conflict of interest with respect to the current matter?
Since I've not been participated in any of the discussions or development with this, I don't think it would put me in conflict with regard to this, but I believe it, you know, the optics are that I've represented Turtle Cove or the space and other matters, so.
So with the respect to those other matters, would anything regarding a vote on this one way or the other near to your financial benefit or loss?
No.
Okay. And did any of your representation pertain to this particular parcel or parcels in any way, shape, or form?
Except when he purchased them many, many years ago, but that has nothing to do with what the intended use is.
Just the original underlying purchase?
Correct.
Okay. Just to be clear, at the time of the purchase, was the zoning and land use at issue?
No.
Are you still able to make a fair and impartial decision based on the testimony and evidence that's going to be presented here today?
I believe I can.
Other than a review of the sale documents, would there be any?
For full disclosure, I've not looked at any of the applicant, application presentation that's been submitted until just now.
Okay. All right, but you can still make a fair and impartial decision based on the testimony and evidence that's presented here today?
I believe I can. I represent a lot of people in this community who have appeared before this board, and it's not dissuaded me one way or another in my decision-making.
And at the time you represented, were you on this board?
No.
Okay. It's fine.
All right, does the staff have a presentation for us?
Yes, Ally Keen, Principal Planner with the Planning and Zoning Department. This application is again a conditional use and site plan review under Resolution number twenty-twenty-four dash oh six. The property includes several different parcels on both the north and south sides of Island Drive totaling about one-point-three acres in size. The current future land use of this property is CRD, which is the Commercial Redevelopment District. This particular land use is the land use designated for all of the properties within the city's Special Area Plan. Specifically, this property is located within the Sponge Docks Character District of the Special Area Plan. The zoning of the property, it falls under the regulations of the SMART code, so it is in the SDC Marine Industrial Commercial Tranceq Zone. The applicants are requesting conditional use approval to allow a seasonal short-term rental facility. Specifically, this is a boutique motor coach resort or an RV park on the subject property. According to the definition of the SMART code, it falls under that category of a seasonal short-term rental facility. And the big distinguishing factor of that is the maximum amount of stay for a particular unit on that property under a seasonal short-term rental definition is six weeks or less. They are proposing a total of sixteen RV parking pads or lodging units. The site improvements include a drop-off area on Island Drive, landscaping, fencing, and other site improvements. The facility will be managed and overseen by the existing Turtle Cove Marina offices, and the general manager will handle any sort of guest issues that arise during a guest's stay. Staff will assist all guests with check-in and out, parking, as well as setup of their vehicles. The property will be gated, so they'll only be accessed by guests and staff. The subject properties are shown here outlined in yellow. Again, it encompasses several different parcels in this area on the north and south side of Island Drive. It is within the SDC Tranceq Zone. The Special Area Plan boundary is the red dotted line you see here. Outside of the Special Area Plan is the Turtle Cove Marina, which is in the WD-one-A Waterfront Development District, and then across is the Stamis Yachts Facility in the WD-two Waterfront Development District. This is a look at the existing future land use within the area. Again, all properties within the Special Area Plan fall within the CRD, which is this very light blue area, future land use category. Outside of the Special Area Plan is the CGF Commercial General Fishing District and then the IG Industrial General District. This is a look at the current conditions on the property. The site does include or encompasses the existing Turtle Cove Clubhouse here, as well as the pool and a portion of the parking lot. All of those facilities and amenities will be available to guests that stay at this facility. There is an existing single-family home still, I believe, on this parcel and this parcel. The former single-family residences on these two parcels have been demolished over the years. Those two homes would be removed in order to develop the facility. Just for some context, the Turtle Cove Marina is located just here to the south. This is a look at the site plan. It's kind of small here on the screen, so I'll try to walk you through it a bit. All of the improvements will take place on the parcels to the north here and to the south. The existing clubhouse and parking lot and pool will remain as is. It's just, again, being utilized by guests of the facility. There will be eight parking places on the north side, as well as eight on the south side of the facility. They are proposing to have a drop-off area on Island Drive. This is where guests will come and pull off the roads. They do not impede any sort of traffic circulation on Island Drive, and staff members will assist them to get set up at the resort. They are also proposing to fully fence in the entire facility with a black wrought iron aluminum fencing, and they'll also be incorporating some landscaping shown here. The landscaping plan meets all of the required standards of the SMART code, which includes landscaping along the frontages, around the perimeter. They're utilizing a mixture of different shade trees and palm trees, as well as hedges. And then I forgot to mention, they also are required and are installing sidewalks along Island Drive on both sides of the street. The applicants did provide an exhibit within their site plan application package showing site circulation. This is just showing that the various sizes of motor coaches can circulate safely in and out of the site, so this shows the circulation patterns and how they can maneuver without impeding the right-of-way, as well as other parking pads in the facility. The site plan request comes with two warrant requests by the applicant. The first is in regards to parking. Typically, the SMART code requires one parking, onsite parking space per lodging unit. Again, they're proposing sixteen units, so they would technically need sixteen parking spaces onsite. The applicants are proposing a total of thirteen dedicated onsite parking spaces, and that will encompass eight parking pads here that will be extended so they could accommodate a motor coach that has a tow behind vehicle. And they're also proposing to dedicate five spaces in the existing parking lot at the clubhouse that would be signed and specifically for the use of the resort facility. During the review, this staff does believe that this is kind of a unique lodging use, and one parking space per lodging unit is probably not typical or needed. Many of the customers, according to the applicant, do not provide or bring any personal vehicle with them. But another consideration was the existing parking lot for the clubhouse has additional parking above the required amount for the existing clubhouse and marina and with the five spaces, so if forever needed additional parking for this facility, it could be accommodated onsite. The second warrant request is in regards to a street screen. The SMART code requires a street screen to be installed along the frontages of Island Drive here, and a street screen must be a wall unless a fence or hedge row is approved by warrant. The applicants are requesting to use a hedge row and trees along the frontage with a combination of a three-foot-tall wrought iron fence. Staff does believe that this proposed screen does meet the overall intent of the SMART code, and additionally, by having a non-opaque screening with the fence as opposed to a wall, it could help improve visibility and circulation along the street, as well as on and in and out of the site. There are a few considerations that we looked at during the review of this application. First is in regards to context. As you all are aware, this is a mixed-use area. There is retail, restaurants, marine-related industrial uses, parking, and residential uses, all within a very close proximity. This particular site is buffered from nearby residential uses by the existing Turtle Cove Clubhouse, as well as the Marina. This site is also located off of the main thoroughfare of Dodecanese, but it is within walking distance to the tourist destinations of the Sponge Docks, so it does not necessitate guests to get in a personal vehicle to go to the destinations that they're here to visit to go see. The next was trip generation and circulation. According to the ITE manual for trip generation... According to the ITE manual for trip generation, this use generates very, very low trip volume, as well as very few peak hour trips. It's less than one trip per occupied campsite. And again, the location minimizes the need for guests to use their separate personal vehicle to go to the destinations they're here to see. The applicant has also demonstrated that the RVs are able to safely navigate to and maneuver in and out of the proposed project site. Next is the Sponge Docks Character District. Again, this is within the special area plan, and that character district is primarily comprised of tourist-oriented, commercial businesses, restaurants, and industrial waterfront uses. There is a specific objective within the special area plan that states that we should be providing tourist accommodation options, such as hotels, motels, inns, and other short-stay lodging within walking distance of the tourist destinations of the Sponge Docks. So although this proposed project is not your typical logical facility, it is a type of use that provides necessary short-stay accommodations on a relatively small scale, within walking distance of those destinations. The last item is in regards to future development. This particular project does not necessitate significant site improvements. So therefore, in the future, it could really be easily redeveloped into something more permanent, if necessary. The applicant provided with their application a few example photos. This is a similar facility elsewhere in the state of Florida, just to give you an idea of what they're looking to do. There's some more photos provided. Looking at your conditional use criteria, staff does believe that all these criteria have been met. I'll quickly read through those. One, the project does conform with the applicable standards of the SMART code. The project is compatible with mixed-use area and supports the overall intent of the Sponge Docks. It also provides the short-stay accommodations to support the existing businesses of the Sponge Docks. The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, a special area plan. The project is not proposed on an environmentally sensitive site. It's not located within the historic district or the Greek Town National Registered District Traditional Cultural Property. The general area is mixed-use, and the site is buffered from nearby residential by existing developments. We do not believe that it will adversely affect adjoining property values. The proposed use will not impact nor exceed the capacity of the city to provide public facilities to the area. The proposed project is developing some underutilized parcels within a developed area, and there are existing utilities to serve the proposed use. And lastly, the proposed project is not expected to adversely impact the general health, safety, and welfare. With regard to the site plan, these are your four criteria to review. The site plan was reviewed by the Technical Review Committee on several occasions and has been found compliant with all of our applicable codes and standards, including stormwater review. And all the details for these criterias are provided in your staff report. With that, staff does recommend approval of Resolution 2024-06 of both the conditional use and site plan, including the warrant requested I went over previously. We do have a few conditions. The first is in ties to the conditional use request, and that is the total number of RV parking pads or lodging units is limited to 16. Based off the size of the property, they could accommodate a few additional units. However, staff believes that 16 is sufficient for that particular area and project site. And then the site plan, we have our typical two conditions, which the construction plans had to be consistent with the site plan approval, and the site plan will expire six months from the effective date if a building permit is not obtained. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
I have a, I have a couple of questions. Is this location inside or outside the Greek Town?
It's outside of it.
Okay.
Yes. It's just on the border.
Okay. And what is, what's the nearest short-term RV park? Or do we even have one in our city limits?
Do we have an actual RV park within the city limits?
A, a, a short-term, like, like, or is it KOA? Is that the one?
Yeah, KOA is probably the most similar, but that's a much grander scale.
Is that within our city limits, or?
I don't think so. There might be one, but I can't come up with one.
Okay. So there is really not one?
It's just over in Palm Harbor.
And within our city limits? I mean, if you don't know, just say.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if there's one within the city boundaries. There are ones in nearby adjacent jurisdictions, yes.
I have a question. How tightly are they held to the example photos? Because those photos are great.
So.
The walkways and the grass.
So these, they're provided as a part of the application, so this is giving you a recollection of what is to be seen on site. It doesn't have to be exactly that, but substantially similar. If they came through with something that was substantially different, we would say was inconsistent with their site plan package they brought forward.
I have a question.
Yes.
And I just, I just might be confused. I thought this was short-term, short-term?
Correct, yes.
But then I saw they're doing, on page nine, they're providing extended parking pads. Am I looking at this the wrong way?
Yeah, so the extended parking, they're just longer. Correct, extended length. Yes.
I have more questions, but they can wait.
I have a few questions, Ally. I just wanted to verify the notices that went out. Unfamiliar with the, the SMART code has any more requirements? Because although we've gone through the whole comprehensive code, we, since I've been on the staff or the board, we haven't touched the SMART code. So is the requirement for the 500 feet the same?
Yes, it's the same.
And how many notices went out for this?
I can look that number up for you.
If you could, I'd like to know that before, soon.
Yes, I'll, I'll grab it when the applicant is up.
And I requested this before, that that, that number be, be ready, because I've asked that at almost every, every meeting. So it's, it's really important that everyone's notified, make sure that they're here, so. I just wanted to verify, were there any concerns that the staff had about anything in this application?
Well, the things that I went over, the considerations.
Other than the conditions?
Well, the considerations that we went over, we looked at this project holistically through the review. We've been working with the applicant for several, several months. They've gone to the Technical Review Committee several times to address all sorts of items ranging from meeting code standards, as well as meeting the stormwater requirements. We talked about traffic circulation, the generation. We wanted to ensure that the RVs were able to safely maneuver in and out of the site without being on Island Drive.
Remaining concerns?
I'm sorry?
Are there any remaining concerns that are articulated in the?
No. What's in the staff report covers our review, and there are no outstanding concerns, aside from limiting it to the 16 units.
So there are no concerns about the, the warrants for parking is, is addressed by the 16, correct?
Correct, yes.
No concerns about the street screening?
No.
No concerns about the anticipated travel route from the, for the RVs that to take Dodikinese from Live Oak around the roundabout to Roosevelt to Island Drive?
Correct, no.
There are no concerns about that?
No, and our Public Works folks reviewed the application as well, and we talked about the anticipated travel route. The applicant will be communicating to their guests if they need to adjust that route for any certain reason. Staff's perspective is there are large delivery trucks, there are coach buses, there are RVs now that access that property and access Dodikinese, so in the roundabout size to accommodate those larger vehicles, so we do not have concerns.
And I'd like to know how the, the factors that were considered in number four were, the conditional use will not result in significant adverse impacts to the environmental or historical resources. What factors did you evaluate, did the staff evaluate to come to that conclusion?
So the, well, the environmentally sensitive sites typically are is for like wetlands and areas of those nature. This is not on a mapped environmentally sensitive sites, which does not address that. It is also outside of our mapped local historic district. It's also outside the boundary of the Greek Town District, so it does not have that impact. I, we believe that it has significant buffering from existing development along that area, provides some protection. And also the sheer nature of what's being developed is, again, in the future, it could be if something more permanent were to go into place, that could happen without major improvements being made. Because this is really just aggregate improvements.
Under the SMART code, again, I'm not familiar with it, because we haven't touched it. Are there any concerns for adversely affecting any commercial property values?
No. No, this particular use from staff's perspective is providing a place for guest accommodations, for overnight stays, that can potentially benefit the businesses in the area.
Can you remind, when was the last time the SMART code was updated?
The SMART code has been periodically updated over the several years for certain items.
The last time?
I would say it was 20, was it 2022? We did updates following the hotel discussion, adjusting some of the heights. But the SMART code was adopted in 2011. It's significant more, or it's been, it's significantly newer than our land development code that was in 1990.
What were the updates that were made in 2022?
They were specific to the hotel heights limitations. There was more specificity provided for above a certain height limit was a conditional use requirement, as opposed to like an automatic allowance.
Were you at the historic Greek Town meeting at Rusty Bellies?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to, to, you know, point out that there were some discussions. Granted, they were provided by the consultant to the workshops at various tables. Mr. Spath was actually sitting next to me at that. In some of the options for the interested affected parties to, to look at and evaluate if they were interested in was maybe eliminating curbs at the Sponge Docks, maybe even, you know, taking streets away. And, you know, I understand that sometimes there are, is communication issues between separate committees and boards within the city, but this application, as you've said, has been going through TRC, so it has definitely been, you know, the staff has been aware of this application and these RVs, and this being their anticipated route, which you don't have any concerns about. You know, and it's just concerning to me, being at that meeting two weeks ago, listening to a consultant in front of our staff propose eliminating curbs, while also a couple of weeks later, listening to an application saying that RVs, luxury RVs, which are like the Mac Daddy RVs, coming down Dodikinese with possibly no curbs. It's very, it's extremely concerning that these different types of factors are not necessarily, you know, being considered by the staff together.
So I would say that that's not, that's not an accurate portrayal. So yes, these things are all.
Well, I would say that it is an accurate portrayal, because I was at the meeting.
These all are considerations. So yes, at the Greek Town meeting, there was discussions about potential options.
No, no, I'm going to correct you on that. It's an accurate portrayal. I was at the meeting, so please don't correct me.
Okay, so let's let the record of that meeting speak for itself.
There was no record, it just wasn't, yeah, but that's.
Okay. Well, let me just, I'll, I'll try to answer your question, or at least provide a response to your question. But in regards, say, if anything were to change on Dodikinese, traffic circulation-wise, then this area, as you all know, has, there are several streets. It is a grid system. There are other avenues to access the property, and there's other ways for a vehicle to get to this location. So it wasn't disregarded.
And that was my next question, was I would think that there should be a traffic study, because this anticipated route is, first of all, it, it. One anticipated route, there's no guarantee. I don't know how you would ever ensure that. I don't know how the applicant could ensure that. And I can guarantee you those, that an RV could not make those turns on the other road. So I would, I would hope that the staff could do a traffic study. I saw the squiggly lines on the site plan that you showed before, and it just was not really convincing.
These are engineered radiuses.
Yeah, well, again, it's not a traffic study, so I would, that's just my recommendation. I'm just, just, I'm asking my questions. I would, you know, again, I'm concerned about the impact on Dodikinese of just the actual roads, the, the, these huge RVs, which will all have at least one car, because they're, do you know how close the nearest grocery store is?
Publix, Winn-Dixie, there's several.
But I don't know about how close is it to this location?
Two, two and a half miles.
So they're going, do, how do you anticipate that they're going to travel there? Most of them will only, will not have a vehicle.
I, I can't answer that question.
And then the six-week stay, and this could be a question for the applicant. Do you, does the staff any idea how that would be enforced?
So that's the, that's the definition of short-term seasonal rental. If there is a complaint that there is an RV there that's extending that stay, then the code enforcement could be involved. I know in discussions with the applicant, he's also talked about putting it in their documents for these stays of maximum length of stay, but that is how they could operate. If they're, someone there parked there for several months at a time, that's not permissible under this use, and they would have to have code enforcement.
So it would be a code enforcement problem?
It, it could be, yes.
That's all the questions I have, thank you.
And the number of postcards was 47.
Thank you.
Was that, I'm sorry.
Forty-seven postcards.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
For the record, you have been sworn as well, correct? You've been sworn.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I assume the drainage has to be blessed, or maybe has already been blessed, by either DEP or the Water Management District, whichever one has jurisdiction in this particular case?
Yes, so the site plan was fully reviewed by our stormwater consultants, and it is found compliant with our requirements, and they'll be required to obtain all of their necessary documents from the Water Management District. And that's double verified in the permitting stage.
Right, so that, that hasn't been completed yet, but it would have to before they pull the actual building?
The stormwater management review has been completed. We verify, once they submit construction plans, that it's still compliant, so there were no changes made in between. So that takes place at the permitting stage, and then they have to provide their SWIFTMUD, which is the Modern Management District, documentations at that time. Yes.
I join her concern about these massive RVs going up and down Dodikinese and making that roundabout. And obviously, you know, I don't, I've never driven an RV, but it seems perilous to me, and there's so much foot traffic, particularly down in that roundabout. I, it's very concerning to me, and I guess I have another question about these RVs, and I, I don't know RVs. So if it's summertime and an RV is placed there and they have, they want to run their AC, is the engine running, or is that totally separate? Do you know? I, I don't know.
I, I would defer to the applicant on how those operations work. I'd also defer the applicant to maybe expand on the actual circulation and getting to the site. He provided us his, his assumed route that they would take, but there's other avenues. And again, like when staff was reviewing this, we, we looked at what operates. You know, there are, there are trucks, there's coach buses, there's all different types of things. So yes, there is, there's, there's lots of people, there's lots of activity on, on the street. But in addition to, you know, accommodating the size of the vehicle, staff's perspective was also that it's, it's a small facility that would have minimal traffic, minimal trips throughout the day.
Well, one of, the concern actually that I was thinking about as well was the diesel fumes, the diesel fumes. Okay, if you have 16 big luxury RVs running their AC off of diesel all day, all night, it's 90 degrees, diesel, diesel fumes. I mean, that's a concern, and I don't know how they work.
They do, they do plug into shore power.
Okay, so it's electric?
Or land power, yes. They have 50 or 100 amp services, just like a house does, basically.
And then, but again, I'll, I'll go back to the diesel fumes, because there is nothing worse than being behind a bus. And all these people walking up and down Dodikinese, it's more diesel fumes.
Okay. I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
There are, currently, there are some commercial warehousing, commercial manufacturing, whether it's, and, and do they not, or do you know whether or not they get semi-trucks that come and go and deliver, whether it's Halas Bakery, the fish market, they come and go, and also a large semis that come and deliver to the restaurants down at the Sponge Docks?
Yes.
And they, they particularly have to manage Dodikinese, because there's, that's the route that they come down? So would it be fair that there is already semis that come and go up and down Dodikinese that service not just the restaurants, the gift shops, the Rusty Bellies Fish Market, Halas Bakery, and whatever else that may be going on down there? Would that be a fair statement?
Yes.
And fuel trucks that come and drop fuel off at the fuel depots?
Yes, there is.
So Dodikinese is used by just more than cars? Thank you.
Yes, sorry, yes.
And my question would also be, how many of these RVs have tag-along cars behind them? Because they're not running these RVs all the time. Some of these are large enough where they have a car they get in and they zip around all these grocery stores and everything else.
Yeah, and I think the applicant can kind of talk about, you know, the tendencies or the typical behavior of these types of guests. But under our review, it was explained to us that not, not everyone tow's a vehicle. Some do, but really, the reason for this particular location is because of its walkability to destinations, so that the car is not as necessary. Yes, you may need it to go to other places, but the primary destinations are within a few footsteps.
I have a quick question, Ally, if I could. I know in the material, there was a, a ton of stuff about stormwater management, but as part of the Technical Review Committee, did you feel, or was it examined, that there's adequate potable water supply and sanitary drainage provisions to accommodate? adequate potable water supply and sanitary drainage provisions to accommodate what could be thirty-two or sixty-four people, you know, at one time at, on the site theoretically?
Yes, they are required to provide their facility's impacts, so the amount of water and sewage and all that's used for this facility, those are reviewed by our utilities folks, and they are found to be sufficient.
If I can follow up on him a little bit, I looked at the renderings, the, you know, of what it would look like all finished, and I saw a lot of real pretty grass. Are they going to get reclaimed water, how, who's gonna, who's gonna water these trees or this grass?
They're required to have irrigation. I don't know, I don't believe that there's reclaimed water in this location, in this area, so they'd be required to irrigate.
With potable water?
If there's no reclaimed available, or can be extended, that's it, yes.
Thank you.
I had one more question, and then the follow-up. Is it your understanding, or I guess, is, is part of the narrative here that the short-term, six-week RV people, and I'm gonna clarify that statement in a second, are here as tourists for the Sponge Docks, and that's where they will be frequenting for six weeks?
So the short-term definition gives a timeframe, so short, to be a short-term rental facility or unit, it's six weeks or less, that gives you your time. After speaking with the applicant, the typical stay, length of stay for these residents are usually three to four days at a time, and they're here to visit the locations that are nearby. So yes, some people may stay longer or less, but they cannot stay longer than six weeks.
Well, I just want to clarify, and, and this has come up in our comp plan, and I want to revisit it, and I, because of this issue, because I think there's a distinction between visitors and tourists, and it's a great site for other reasons than the Sponge Docks. I mean, it's, it's on the water there, I mean, obviously, we know that, there's, there's multiple reasons why people will want to stay there. We've had these discussions about, hey, the Sponge Docks is a, is a half a day destination, a one-day destination. Whatever one of people say about that, it's definitely not a six-week destination, and that's why, obviously, you know, I think that came into your, the staff's evaluation as far as the, the car situation, as far, because that wouldn't be reasonable. People are going to have a car with them on all of these RVs, so I just think that there's a distinction between visitors and tourists, and I think that this, this lodging, this special lodging should be considered, because, I mean, when there was a hotel, which would bring tourists, we had, you know, the Merchants Association here, and I don't see them tonight. So there's definitely a distinction between visitors, and this is not a critique or a negative, but I think that that is a distinction that should be realized by the, by the board as, as well, that visitors and tourists are not the same type of individuals. There's other reasons to visit the area, but we do have to consider, I think as a board, the impact on the tourism industry as well, not to say that, that, that they're not entitled to their visitors as well, but we have to, to look at the same, because they are in close proximity, and that should be taken into consideration.
Okay, yes.
Further questions for staff?
I have one. And is everybody else asked other questions?
Ms. Keane, so good to see you, how are you tonight?
I'm good, how are you?
So, under the application and the short-term lodging that this would be provided by, would it be possible that the owner were at some point in the future to purchase and park their own RVs on these pads and let them out for short-term stays in more of an Airbnb or a Verbo, or however that's done, and kind of in a way, using this, kind of like a food truck service? So is that some, is that a provision that could happen, or would there be any built-in guardrails against that as applied?
I would say based off of the application that's being presented today, it's intended for people to bring their personal RVs to a location and to take those away, not to have ones permanently there. If it were to change into something where there's something permanently at the site, I think they would likely have to come back through a process.
Okay, so that, that's my question, which is, I understand the intent of the application today, but I can see easily, and in fact, I kind of see it that way, that the ideal situation would be to buy four or five of my own, they're for sale right now, and park it on those extended pads, or allow some other owner to park theirs for a continued, and then sublet that out and turn those into just mini Airbnbs. So do we have any constraints as written into this application, or within our smart code, that would make sure that the intent and the spirit is actually enforced by law?
So, so again, my, our interpretation of the, the application is that it's for personal RVs who come and go to the site. The board could put a condition that's very clear to attach the conditional use, if you felt that was necessary, just to really enforce that, but I would say the interpretation of what's being presented today is they're not permanent vehicles parked on the site, and, and that was a concern of staff as well, that's, we really talked about, you know, there's a six-week time limit, what happens, you know, that is your cutoff, it's intended for a short-term stay. Now, if they wanted to come back in the future and, you know, go through a process to build little tiny homes on those pads, to have more permanent places where people can come and do Airbnb, they'd, Airbnb, they'd have to come through this process again, because it's a different application than what's presented to you today.
Agreed, because an RV is a tiny home, a wonderful one. So if hypothetically, what verbiage would we include so that we just nipped that right now and made sure that all of the pads were always occupied by non-owners and were never allowed to be subletted?
So ultimately, you can't do that, there is an industry that does rent RVs, so, you know, I, I'll use myself as an example, I don't have an RV, but if I wanted to, I could go and rent an RV, the same way that I could rent a car, and then go and, and put it there. Ultimately, because of the way that your ordinance is drafted, with the six-week limitation in it, the, if any vehicle were parked there for more, and, because they are all registered, so that's an easy thing for code enforcement to track, you know, and if there were any vehicle that were parked there for more than six weeks, it would be flagged, and it would be, it would result in a code enforcement action.
So it wouldn't have to actually be reported, or, I mean, that would help, obviously, but...
It would, it would.
I, I'm sorry.
No, that, that was my question, my question's done, thank you very much.
Yeah, but in, in order to maybe, as a condition, that the, the rental, require that the rental agreement make specific reference that, that the stays are limited to six weeks?
Make specific reference to towns or to the city's ordinance, yes, if you wanted to include that.
That would be a condition, a condition that, that their, whatever rental agreement they have in place, reference the six weeks requirement.
And you, you could say something to the, to the point of no vehicle, in addition to that, no vehicle may be allowed to stay in one of the spaces more than the six weeks, because as it is, the people could change, but not the vehicle, but if you address, address it by saying, no vehicle can stay longer than that, you've kind of caught it both ways.
I think so. I, I don't know if there's any more board questions, I actually had a question. So when I looked at this the first time, I actually mistakenly made the assumption that the Turtle Cove LLC and the SNN Tarpon Enterprises, Inc. were the same or related entities, but in looking at, at SunBiz and all that, it appears that they are not, they're actually separate entities. So my question is, with respect to the parking agreement, you're essentially giving them the five off-site parking agreements, do we have a recorded easement for those five parking spaces, or an easement that would be recorded, assuming that this application were to be approved?
We don't have a separate easement agreement, we could request that as a condition to be provided with the permit, yeah, because I believe the property owner, he, he's tied to both properties, but we can get an easement agreement, just to make sure it's very clear.
I, I actually am looking at, and, and unless I have it wrong, I did not see that there was a relationship between the individual company owners. Now, that, that, obviously, that would be nice if there, there is a relationship that that could be cleared up, but because it is very clear on the property appraiser's website that one, that, that, actually, you know, there's, there's three parcels, and I was kind of curious as to why there's not going to be a unity, like, of title, so they would all be as one, and the, the property owners, particularly where we're doing a site plan that's come, you know, based on a combination of all these properties. But the, particularly what I was, I was interested in is the, the aspect where you have an off-site parking allowance, but that has to be memorialized in some sort of easement agreement that does get recorded with respect to these properties in order for it to be considered to meet that requirement.
Yes, yes, we can request that, we can add it as a condition.
And Attorney Kardashian, I'm not sure if you, on your research on SunBiz, if you found that Tarpon Turtle Cove Condominium Association as well, just, I was a little confused about.
I did, I did see that, that were neighboring, those were neighboring properties that do not appear to have a relationship to this application. I did, though, and part of the reason I probably thought that they were a related entity is because, isn't the leasing office in the Tarpon Cove Clubhouse? Isn't that what I read?
Yes, it's correct.
Yes, they're, they're all, they all operate together. Okay. I, I would like some clarity on the record, particularly if the business entities no longer exist, then you have a site here that would no longer have a leasing office on-site if whatever relationship between these two different entities no longer exists.
Okay, the property owner is here, so he can probably provide a little bit of information, but we can definitely add conditions for whatever type of documentation that you need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Since we have none, would the applicant like to make a presentation? If so, approach the microphone, state your name and address, and you're welcome to rebut anything that anyone has said, or just make your presentation.
Fair enough. Edward Spath, eight-four-seven Roosevelt Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, and yes, I've been sworn in. I'm more than happy to answer all of your questions, your concerns, and I'd like to kind of clarify this whole project a little bit, and give everybody a better understanding of what this really is. So I do own Turtle Cove Marina, I do own the clubhouse, as well as all the SNN Tarpon Enterprise properties. I purchased those many, many years back. I've had four different people approach me about building restaurants, I've had people approach me about building hotels. Quite candidly, that property has sat there for vacant for many, many years, and I've looked to try to find something to do with it. I've sat down with people, I'm not a developer, I'm a Marina guy, I've looked at people to build townhomes on it, different things, and with flood insurance, hurricanes, and all of this stuff here, it's got to come to a point to where either I sell the land, which I've had the land up for sale for probably six years, and I think we all are finding this down here in Tarpon, especially on the Sponge Docks. If something were to end up happening to a building or a structure down there, we have very expensive pieces of property that somebody needs to be able to, and build something on. I took the approach two years ago during COVID to buy a motor coach and start traveling with my wife. I've visited many, many high-end motor coach parks, I can answer questions about tow-behind vehicles, fifth wheels, trucks, I'm gonna go through the whole gamut of this, and any of your concerns, I'll be more than happy to answer. So with that being said, I did approach staff about it to say, would this be something that would be potentially doable down there? The way I looked at it is, as being a large landowner on the Sponge Docks, the walkability of the Sponge Docks is huge. People love to see the waterfront, citizens don't want the waterfront blocked, so if I were to build townhomes or something on there, it would block the view. These are concrete or pavers, paved, paved pads, I'm undecided on which I'm gonna do at the moment, pavers are a maintenance nightmare, they will settle over time, you'll get weeds growing through them, so more than likely, it's gonna be concrete pads. As far as what the overall facility is gonna look like, I've got one opportunity, building a boutique motor coach park, to make a name and have people return. If they have a bad experience, my business is done, like in anybody's business, if you have a small business. If I don't treat those people right, and they don't have a good time here, and they don't have first-class amenities, which is why I'm using the clubhouse, or swimming pool, which has not been open for three and a half years now because of COVID, nobody wants to come in and do anything. People have approached me about building a restaurant, I don't want to be in the restaurant business, my wife would kill me if I got in the restaurant business. I don't want to be in the restaurant business, but I do know that my Marina patrons, who are local and non-local people that come here and use their boat, use the Sponge Docks, and the way I view this is, it's no different than a transient boater coming and visiting my Marina, or coming and visiting the city's Marina, and getting off of their boat and walking the Sponge Docks. People coming by boat, maybe will stay three days, four days, people coming in these motor coaches are gonna stay three or four days. The rule of thumb in the industry out there right now is these people travel with this motto of three, 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 and that stands for, they don't want to drive any more than three hours to their next destination, they want to stay three days, and they want to arrive by three o'clock. The majority of these people that have these RVs that we're talking about are older people, they have discretionary income, they enjoy doing stuff. My wife and I have a big diesel motorboat, I mean, a, a motor coach, we don't pull a car. When we go somewhere, we've been to St. Augustine, we've been all the way up to Washington DC to see Marilyn, I meet a lot of people. We go, we Uber, or we'll catch a rail system going in and out of towns or doing something. So to some concerns about grocery stores and all of this stuff, these, whether it's a fifth wheel, or it's a, a luxury motor coach, they have full-size refrigerators, they have washers, they have dryers, they have microwaves, they have ovens, they have heated floors, they plug in, they plug in, we are going to have shore power pedestals, fifty amp, there are sewer dumps that come right out, that go in, so nothing is going anywhere. These are luxury items that people are traveling in today, because people are more embraced in family and doing things, as well as people, when they go to these certain locations, they have families, or they have friends that maybe went to college or somewhere. These are going to be people that are gonna come down here, and they're gonna walk in every restaurant and every shop, and they're gonna spend their money, and they're gonna go. I've driven, as I said, as far as Washington DC in a forty-three-foot motor coach, a diesel pusher, tag axle, these things turn and drive like a car. It's not the old-school, what, you know, that RV movie with, I don't know who the guy is, whatever, but these, these, these are not, these, these are, these are machines today. It's like getting a boat, believe me, I have almost five hundred boaters at my Marina, and they may be able to afford a boat, but a lot of them may not be able to drive them sometimes, but today with technology, you have systems on a boat that you can basically steer it with a joystick. These buses have fifteen cameras on them, they have guidance avoidance, they have everything you would want on them. I also thought about coming to my location. I drive up and down that Sponge Docks, and I have for twenty-two years, when I came to this town and developed the Marina. I drive it every day. We all drive by GPS today, and we listen when we drive, and, and it's saying, go, 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 go. When I drive the Sponge Docks, I'm brake, stop, brake, stop, only because there are other vehicles that are slowing the traffic flow to get to my location. These buses are these fifth wheels, have GPS, and it's gonna say, continue here, three hundred feet, four hundred feet, make a left, it's gonna pull you in there. So as far as, as traffic going up and down, it's not gonna be any different than anybody else. With sixteen coaches or RVs coming in, we're talking realistically one to two a day, that is it. That's all that's going to travel that Sponge Dock area. Also, with the flooding issue down there, between Roosevelt Boulevard, when it was paved in front of the Marina, going around to Island, my customer... My customers right now are driving very, very expensive, high-end sports cars, SUVs. As soon as you turn off Roosevelt Boulevard and you go down an island drive, you're in water at high tide. Like I said, I have one opportunity to do it right. I've already talked to the city and the staff. I'm paving that road and raising it out of my pocket to make sure that I don't have a million-dollar bus going into saltwater anymore, and my customers don't have to drive their expensive cars in there. I'm a very particular businessman, and I want things done right. So I'm going to do it right. The six-week stay, that is beyond what I even, that was brought to me. It is going to cost somebody roughly $4,200 to $4,500 a month to stay on one of those paths. If you go to the KOA up here, it's $140 a night. If you want to sit on the water down here, you're going to spend $190 a night. Or would you rather stay here or here? It's like anything out there today. That facility will stay busy. It will bring people into the restaurants. It will bring people into the shops. They're going to let people know if I do it right, and we're going to have a lot of people down here. Scallopens become a big issue down here right now. You know, all of a sudden, we can scallop here. That'd be a great venue for somebody to bring their motor coach or something. They can dock a boat at the Marina. They can go out with their family. They can stay the weekend. We have the festivals down here. You have the Arts Festival. You have the Seafood Festival. These people travel. They don't live in Pinellas County. They travel from out of the county. They come here in their RVs. You can go down there any given day, and I have pictures until the cows come home. Everybody's parking on my property right now in RVs. They're down there. So as far as them coming down and doing, they're going to come regardless. I'm giving them a safe site to enjoy Tarpon Springs and everything that it has to offer and the history. And if I want to change it one day, I can scrape the concrete off and decide to build something. It's, it's a simple way to do something with the property, clean it up. Because I'm tired of hearing about code enforcement. I need to mow it, to be candid. But all I do is mow grass down there right now and pay taxes. So I didn't answer any of your questions. I probably rambled on a little bit, I know.
I have a couple of questions that I wanted to address at first.
Yeah.
I, I've known you since you you came to town, and I know that when you built the Turtle Cove, you were proactive in dealing with the fire department, fire marshals, about everything, and I remember that distinctively about you. So I, and I know you've had that property for a long time. And I'm glad that you said that. I'm unfamiliar with RV traveling in this three, three, this thing that you said. And I think that that would have been helpful in, so what there is in the, from what we have is all the, that they have, right? So they, they have to put you in a category. But there is a, an option for a narrative. And I don't think that that was necessarily maybe, that would have helped us understand, I think, a little bit better about the actual proposed use, because I said, I, I do know that you are, you've had this property a long time. You wouldn't just do this all of a sudden, you know, you didn't just come here last year and throwing this out here. So that would have been really helpful, and this is more of a note to staff. Rather than to try to make what you are trying to do into something that it is not, which is all we have to look off of. So if we can just see the six weeks, you know, that's all we're seeing, and that's, but is from what you're saying, is that that's not even how it's going to be. It's too expensive for these people to say. And I understand, you know, what you're saying, and honestly, I have no issue with that. My concern obviously is still the travel thing. I don't think, as Mr. Kuskuda said, it's comparable to our trucks that deliver things because those are necessary, and that's always going to be an issue. They come in the morning. And honestly, to the benefit of all of your, if that could be something, you just say, best to come before noon on any day, just for travel in, in general, for, because it sounds like it's not a necessary, the season, these are seasonal, but not necessarily by a certain season. They're just, because I know my clients, a lot of my clients have RVs and travel, and they, time is not an issue for them, but they have all the time in the world.
No, they're, they're, a lot of them, a lot of them are retired. They, they go. It's hard to tell somebody they can be here at a certain time, though, because if they're, if they're leaving Bradenton or Longboat, and you get on 75, or you get on 19, and there's a wreck, they, they can't get here. So.
But I mean, just as like that, I mean, honestly, I know where the location is. It is away from everything, and I get it. And but again, that my only concern really is that, and I just, you know, with getting there, and I just, to make sure that those are addressed, that they're aware of those, if they can't come the way that they're supposed to, that they are aware of the other, you know, impair, like the other roads, that those are not roads that these big luxury, like RVs can turn down.
Well, it's, it's, it's a situation with, with everybody who has a business down there on the Decanese right now. It's, it's, but no, but what I'm saying is, is tide. I mean, I don't need the, my customers coming down here for the very first time who've never come here, and then they turn off, or they come across live oak, go through the traffic light, and now they're in front of Dimitri's and in a foot and a half of water. So the same way, we have, we have a hump right past Rusty Bellies. When we did a lot of transient business, there was a flat rock there. So we always asked our transient boaters you came, what time do you expect to be at the Marina? And if it was low tide, we warned them, do not come. Or slow up a little bit, come in in two hours earlier or later, speed up. Same situation here. If there is a, a situation, and we know in the summertime when high tide is, I'm going to tell people to basically turn off a 19, come down Tarpon Ave, down to the bayou around. They can get back in off, it's easy to make a left-hand turn. It's hard to make a right-hand turn. They can make a left-hand turn. They can go right down Roosevelt and pull in right past the Marina and not even go down the sponge docks. So again, I don't know, I, I think everybody here, if you see saltwater, you don't want to drive through it. So but if you have to, you live here, it's one thing, but to, to have a guest or somebody come here and want to repeat and not a bad blog out there, you better put your best foot forward and make sure they don't go through saltwater. So I'm going to be very, you know, observant about that and make sure that my staff knows. Look, you know, it's like a tide chart. Here we have it. Just if these people are checking in on this day, let's make them aware of, send them an email and make sure, and pick up the phone and call them, say, hey, listen, you know, if you can leave a little later there, you can come in earlier, come in. So I, I understand your concerns.
And how large are the parks that you've been going to the last few years?
Very, very small. I mean, I mean, excuse me, I mean, small, I mean, nothing to the, to the size of this. I mean, I've been going to, I've been in parks that have been 1,500 sites. I've been in parks that have been 30, 40. Nothing, nothing this small. The only thing I've, I've even remotely, the, the examples that are in there is a Marina called Yod Haven down in Fort Lauderdale. That was purchased by a Marina group, West Trek, actually, and they're developing that down there. When I went with my wife and my kids to Country Music Festival over on Fort Lauderdale, we stayed at that motor coach park. And when I pulled up and I saw the wooden dock, and I saw the waterfront, and I saw the Marina, I was like, a light bulb went off. My wife and I were like, well, we have this right here. We're trying to, you know, shove a square peg in a round hole. It's, that's when I came back and said to staff, would this be something that would work, that would, you know, be, you know, aesthetically pleasing as well as allow me to move forward? Because my son's running, running my Marina now. He graduated college with an MBA. I'm trying to do some other stuff, and I'm looking, he doesn't want me to sell the Marina. So I'm like, well, what am I going to do with this land? If I can't have a restaurant, I got to do something with it. So that's, that's where this just came up about. So, and yes, I have had the land for probably seven years. So.
Thank you.
I, I do have a few questions, Ed. One of the questions Counsel had addressed was using your, your current leasing office at the Marina as a leasing office for this. But the clubhouse itself has its own office space, correct?
Correct.
So, so if you had to end up selling, let's say you sold the Marina or whatever, change a different ownership, you, there actually is a place on site to have a leasing office on site.
Well, the actual, the Marina itself
In the clubhouse.
Has its own, has its own office. I know somebody brought up and mentioned something, I think it was yourself regarding Turtle Cove condominium association. That was the, the craze and the raise back in 2006 through eight. I only condoed one part of that Marina and sold slips there. I'm actually in the process right now. Everything's already, the amendments have been, it's, that condominium association is being terminated. It's going away. So I'm still, I, even though I own the majority of the slips in the condo, I also own the, now it's the Marina. Now it's just going to be totally me. The clubhouse is always me. S and N Tarpon Enterprise, I bought under a different entity at the time, just because it wasn't associated with Turtle Cove. Now, the landings at Turtle Cove is going to be kind of tied into the, to the whole development.
But if, but if you had to, there's office space.
There's office space at the Marina. It has nothing to do with the clubhouse.
Right, but there's office space, there's office space within the clubhouse if you needed to have office space for rental office.
Correct.
Necessary. Okay. On these, these motor homes, because you call this a, a, a high-end facility, what's the average cost of these? Is it like, you know, up to $1 million, some of these things that people are driving?
Probably the average out there today, I mean, they're a dime a dozen like boats. When COVID, I would say things range, if, if you have a, a diesel pusher or something, you're talking 300,000 to 2 million. The, I, I know one concern was diesel exhaust fumes. My forklifts at the Marina, the two that I just purchased, and every diesel vehicle back in the day, used to be behind a bus, or you used to be behind a car, and you stepped on the gas, you got hit with soot. Everything now runs on DEF, diesel exhaust fluid. You could literally go to my forklifts, or you could go to my diesel truck right now, and it could run, and you could put your nose right there, and it doesn't smell anymore. So they're quiet. You hardly hear, the, the, the noise levels that these new engines from Cummins and things come out, they're, they're as quiet as your car is. If you're going down the interstate at 75 miles an hour, yeah, you do hear it go by because of the turbos, but other than that, when they're just idling, they're quiet. So they're not, they're not noisy, and they don't, you know, produce a lot of soot, or they don't do anything like that.
New ones.
Correct. Well, yeah, but the, the same thing with that. I know that staff had had a, you know, I, I, I understand the perception. This is not a RV park where somebody's going to come abandon their, abandon their RV at. It's the same situation where we don't, for what I charge it at the Marina, nobody's going to come hide their boat from their bank there because it costs too much. And if you read my storage agreements, I don't hold, hold boats for bailed storage. I mean, quite candidly, if you don't pay me in the second month, there's already things in process that are trying to find out where this is, the bank. Same situation here. These people are not going to be abandoning their 300,000 or million-dollar vehicle on my property. So.
I think, I think one of the concerns, and it, I just know this just from hearing, that some people literally live in their RVs. They live there. They have to. They choose to. They live there. And I think that is a concern.
Sure.
And I, I, I see that it's limited, you know, six weeks, short term. And I think part of it, one of the things that we've all been talking about is policing that. Somebody has to pay attention, and I'm assuming it would be you. Because you're going to want that person, maybe the next person, you don't want to get an ordinance violation, a code violation, excuse me. Is that you, you would pay?
My, my staffer myself, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm there three, four days a week at the Marina. So, but, but yes, I mean, it's not a, again, this is, this is not, there, there are RV parks, and there are a boutique motor coach park, or there's a high-end motor coach park. This is what this is. I'm not, I, I don't, I'm not, in, in my agreement, same thing as, as at the Marina, if your boat is too old, we don't even take it. We just won't even take it. So the majority of the places that I've visited with my wife, if you go in there, if your, if your RV or your motor coach is more than 15 years old, they won't even allow you on the property. So we're not going to be having Yogi Baron is like little jellystone coming down the sponge docks and dumping his old air, you know, airstream on that property that the tires are flat on. That's, we're not even going to let them in. We have the right to deny them. When they pull over there, if we see something that doesn't fit, because let's, let's face it, if, if you're in a million-dollar bus and you have something that's offensive or doesn't look good, no different than my Marina, there's not a guy that's going to be sitting in a 65-foot boat in a wet slip and then want some dilapidated boat with a, you know, a household AC hanging out the side of it. It's just not going to happen. So you got to go. And, and believe me, I've thrown many people out of the Marina and have been on the phone with the police department, and they've had to come down and said, you know, you got to go, you know? Well, I don't have anywhere to go. Well, you can untie, and you can go anchor. It's happened. So.
And back to the parking spaces, is that, are those, those are not on your property?
They are on my property.
Or they are on your, okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other?
Just to clarify what Darla asked you with respect to it being on your property. Although you own both companies, the properties are titled differently. So the five parking spaces, was, is that a yes?
The, the S and N Tarpon, right now currently Turtle Cove Group LLC owns the parking lot where the five, five parking spaces are. S and N Tarpon Enterprises is the, is the, the new development part of it. That entity is going to be going away, and it's going to be going into the landings at Turtle Cove LLC. So as far as if I need to put something, that's fine, but I mean, it's, it's unity, I mean, I've done unity and title with, with the city about other, other stuff. If that's, I don't know what, we'd have to work with that.
Here's what I would want for a condition with respect to this item is if at the time he applies for his building permits, the properties are titled in the same name, whether it's the LLC, whether it's an individual, whatever it is, but the properties have to be in the same name. If they are not in the same name, then there has to be an easement recorded that is a permanent easement for those five parking spaces.
Okay.
Okay.
And I would just add that the city has required parking agreements in the past for this kind of situation, so it's not, nothing new.
All right, I kind of stated this before, but I just have one last question.
Sure.
I know you mentioned that you didn't want a restaurant, but in that you have one shot to make this work, but you have any future plans if it doesn't work out to put a hotel there?
No, not me.
Just ask him. I had to ask.
No, I've been approached, believe me.
I just, I had to ask.
Have no desire, no. I mean, nobody, nobody wants to pay me what the land's worth. I mean, that's, that's, that's face it, at the end of the day, they say, they say they can't make the numbers work. It would be the same thing as me coming in and putting $6 million or something in townhomes on the waterfront, and I, I, I don't, I don't want to do that. So I'm.
Gina said, I mean, if somebody fell on your property, it would be a disaster to sue you. But we would do it with all those entities.
I, I do have actually a question, too. You kind of got into a little bit about talking about the, the flooding situation in the area. But what would your plans be for the property when there were hurricane evacuation orders? Is that something that you already have written into your lease agreements?
It's, it, well, in the, at the Marina, we, we, we have something, you know, 72 hours, or, you know, everything's changing now. The, the technology is getting way better. We used to not know. So all of these people, they're, they're very well-tuned to, I mean, that's their baby. I mean, so at the end of the day, we're going to notify them that they have to leave, but I'll guarantee if they see an enigmatic storm coming this way, that they're going to be getting in, and they're going to be going to Ocala, or they're going to be going to Orlando. They're not going to leave their, their, their rig sitting down there. They're, they're going to get out of Dodge. So, yeah.
All right. Any, no further questions for the applicant? With that, we'll call for public comments. Then you can be seated for now. Do we have any members of the public here wishing to speak in favor of this application? Okay, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak against this application?
Neutral.
Okay, you're in the middle then. State your name and address.
Yes, I'm Carl Waggonfor. I've seen all you guys before. A member of the Friends of the Anclote River. It's been a while since I've been in this room with you. But if you could please give me the laser pointer so I could use that illustration.
And just for the record, you have been sworn, correct?
I have been sworn, and I live at 98 South Island Avenue, Unit 401. Thank you. Let me say first that I'm a quite experienced RV-er. I've been traveling for the entire summer since about 2008, with the exception of two years of COVID. So I have a lot of experience with, with not only RVing, but also towing. There's a term that you, you should know called TOAD, T-O-A-D, which describes whatever vehicle it is that you have hanging off the back of your motorhome. In my case, I have towed motorcycle on a trailer and a medium-sized SUV. Um, one of the things, uh, I, I see some flaws in the design of this, I think, but, uh, I'm gonna try to limit my, uh, my criticism to those flaws that are gonna impact the traffic flow around the site. I think that's gonna be pretty, pretty damned important. There is a letter in your package from Northside Engineering, uh, which in gen, speaks in generalities in general, but in the, the first sentence, more or less, it, I quote, "Most customers would not be bringing a vehicle to the site." Having used the motorhome for sixteen years, that, that conflicts with my entire experience. If he says most would not be bringing, that means it's gotta be fifty-one percent. That would be most. In my experience, it's more in the order of twenty to twenty-five percent of the people don't bring vehicles, and those that don't are usually traveling in a much smaller unit, where, where it's much easier to get around town, go to shopping centers, and so forth. So, um, let me take you through what the process is of, uh, arriving at a, at an RV park and getting into it. First thing you've gotta do is park your rig, which could include a motorhome and trailer, or a big pickup truck and a fifth-wheel trailer. You've gotta park it within walking distance of the place that you're gonna check into. So you go check in, and then the next thing you have to do is, if it's a motorhome towing something, you have to disconnect the, uh, the vehicle from the motorhome. And I'm wondering where that's gonna be done, in terms of the, uh, there we go. There's this drop-off, this thing called a drop-off area here that's in the site plan, that I assume is the place where people are supposed to stop, check in, and then, uh, and then proceed to their site, but the problem is, this drop-off area is beyond the two entrances on both sides of the road to the RV park. So in order to access their site, they're gonna have to make another loop around Roosevelt and Dodecanese, so they can get in this driveway or this driveway. Makes it even more difficult when it's a fifth-wheel being towed by a large, uh, pickup truck, cause they're not gonna be able to disconnect it, they're gonna be taking that whole rig, perhaps sixty feet of it, around all these little roads for a second trip. And to what extent is that going to interrupt traffic flow there? The other thing in my experience is, there is a, usually a check-in time for these, uh, parks, and typically, uh, there is a line of vehicles waiting to check in at that time of day. Just like there's a line of vehicles waiting to check out on their departure date. So, I don't know what the length of this, whoops. The.
Four minutes.
The length of the drop-off area is, uh, sufficient, but, uh, I guess my time is up, and I'd like to leave the owner with one more thought. It's a clever idea, I like the idea of. What? Alright, is this within the rules of procedure?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
She donates two minutes, correct?
We need the name of the person.
For the, for the record? Okay, did you get that?
Cam? Annette Carr.
Annette Park.
And the address?
Eight forty-seven Gollum Road.
Thank you.
I'd like to also, uh, point out, one of the attractions that I find in whatever park I stay in is to, uh, make sure that there is adequate tree cover, that there's a canopy over the RVs to, to prevent the sun from beating down on the roof and turning it into an oven. I haven't seen the landscape plan, I don't think, with, with this project, but I would, um, I'd like to see some, some trees in these areas providing shade. Well, I'd like to see it, I think your customers would like to see the shade, so that they're not burning up all of your electricity cooling an oven. Alright, and, uh, the other thing I'd like to point out is the, the extra five spaces here, they are separated from the RV spaces where the RVs are gonna be, not only, uh, by the street, but there is a, I guess, a translucent screening so that they're gonna have to walk around like that, the, uh, there's a lot of, uh, movement back and forth of equipment and, and food and, and various other things between the, uh, the towed vehicle and the RV, and I think this would not be a very good solution. So, I will, uh, thank you for the two minutes, and I wish you luck with this. I think it's a great idea because it's, it's been my concept, I used to live in Clearwater Beach, that the best use of waterfront property in a coastal high hazard area is an RV park, cause you can roll the hell out of there when the storm is coming. And, uh, that might be the, the future of the sponge docks twenty or thirty years from now, but, good luck to you on this.
Do we have any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Tina Boukavales, one fifteen Athens Street, I have been sworn in. Um, I think the applicant really knows what he's doing as a businessman, and I congratulate you for even thinking of raising the road. But I do think there are some problems with this application. Um, first of all, I think it's premature. There, uh, we need an independent outside traffic study, uh, to be done. Um, the travel route is down a congested street, Dodecanese, with a narrow roundabout and a sharp turn into the lot. Large RVs, and they state the lengths are from twenty to thirty-nine feet that are towing another something, are going to have trouble. Uh, they will have even more trouble when Dodecanese is closed for events or flooded. Uh, and they will have trouble on Roosevelt when it is flooded, as it frequently does. Um, so, I'm not sure, frankly, that this is a great place for an RV park, although the applicant certainly does know what he's doing. And I don't want to see those enormous vehicles also trying to get out and cutting through the tiny streets of Greek Town, which are essentially like one-way streets that they would have trouble getting through without hitting the cars that are already parked. Moreover, um, the study and report for the Greek Town Vision Plan is being completed now. And there have, there were many suggestions at recent meetings, both meetings, I was at both of them, for closing Dodecanese at certain times of the day or on certain days, and redirecting traffic. So, this current proposal is really, I think, inappropriate until we get that report. And I was told by, I, I think it was the consultant, but it might have been staff, that that report may be coming in as early as March. Um, and I think the Turtle Cove people know this too, because they were at the meeting. Also, I want to point out that the site is outside the Greek Town Historic District, but it's one block outside the district. And it's not, and there, it is a block or two, depending which way you go, from a residential district. Would you like an RV park a block or two from your house? I mean, it may be a very upscale RV park, but I don't think any of us particularly do want that. Especially not when you are a historic district that is trying hard to retain the historical character, and is trying to put guidelines in place to do so. I think it's a great idea to do this, I'm not sure if it's the right place. Frankly, most RV parks are on the edge of towns, not in the middle of towns. And there are all sorts of problems that need to be studied more thoroughly, I think, before this can take place. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to comment?
Peter Lachas, five one four Ashland Avenue, Tarpon Springs, and just for the record, Ms. Annie Samarcus uh, has donated two minutes of time, so I can start at six. See, it's already ticking, thank you. Alright, so Carl kinda gave you.
Can you give your, the rest of your address for Ms. Creighton?
Yeah, five one four Ashland Avenue, Tarpon Springs.
And you were sworn, correct?
Yes, correct, thank you.
Annie Samarcus' address as well.
Okay.
Miss Samarcus, can you give your address for the record to Ms. Creighton?
Alright, so now that all the official signing in stuff, can I get reset at six? Thank you, dear. Alright, just wanna follow up a little bit on what Carl spoke, I have been camping. I bought in April twenty-one, we bought a twenty-two and a half foot Coachman Catalina. I pull it with a F-150, and I've had to learn how to pull in and out of parks. Now, one thing about parks, usually they have a checkout time by eleven, no long, and then you check in by two or three. And as Carl mentioned, you're gonna have somebody waiting there, maybe they come in at two o'clock, waiting to get checked in. They're sitting there, you got Pelican Point, or somebody else wanted to get another truck through, and then you get another RV come behind it, you've got backed-up traffic, and he already explained to you some of the issues with regards to that. But I wanna focus on a couple other things that weren't specifically brought up. When I look at the site plan, I don't see a dump station, and Mr. Space said that he's gonna have individual dump stations. What that means, at each site, there's gonna be a hole in the ground with a cap, you take the cap off, you take your, your hose from your, from the bottom of your, your trailer or your RV, and you run it. Those people who hook up, long-term, they stay there and leave it that way. Now, if you're at a place with a dump station, you hold it till you leave and you dump it at one place. Now, we talk about flooding, what happens when you got sixteen septic tubes running in, and then you got a quick high king tide and a rainstorm, and then the water floods in, you're gonna flood into those, those tanks, maybe overflow them. Secondly, they're proposing an underground vault system. You're already, I, I think from what I saw on the record, some of the geological, only three feet above the water table. How are you gonna be putting in an underground vault system in a coastal high hazard area? So those are things that really are logistically concerns of mine with regards to it. I believe this is a novel idea, it can be used, but I also look at it as putting in ten pounds potatoes in a five-pound bag, and I'm gonna explain that a little further to you. I don't know how many of you have an RV or have experienced an RV, but I've been in trailer parks or state parks where there are RVs, and a lot of these big homes, as the gentleman mentioned, it's true, they've got pop-outs, slide-outs, so when they drive, it's nice and narrow, eight feet. But when they park, you can pop out a big section which has a couch, a dining room table, it can go out five feet. So, if you look at the diagrams, you only got ten feet between them. So, the way they usually work, if you're looking like you're driving, this side you have a canopy, this side you gotta pop out. So I, you park here, and then I park next to you. I wanna put my canopy out, that goes out five feet, he puts out his pop-out, that's five feet, you got canopies and pop-outs hidden. I just don't, you're just trying to put too much into too small a space. He's explained that, yeah, there's room in there to make turnarounds, but if you look at the circulation diagram, to get, you gotta pull way in and then back out, so if you're in the back space, how are you gonna pull way in and then back out? And there is, like I said, there's no dump station, there will be electrical hookups, but the other factor is really, like he's mentioning, he's gonna raise the road, so where does that water then go to, to your adjoining properties? So are we gonna have problems with the adjoining properties there? I believe this could be worked, but it'd be, it, it really needs to be scaled down a little bit more. It would give more room for canopies and trees, when you look at these pictures in there, it's kinda hard to get perception of, of the distances between these places, and they look all nice and manicured and such of that nature. But in reality, they get used, they get worn, unless it's really properly maintained and upkeep, you're gonna get dust and dirt from places that are in between these places unless it's properly maintained. But another factor, um, really is getting in and out of this area. As the gentleman mentioned, a lot of these units are GPS, so you're coming down Live Oak, and you get to Dodecanese, and then you start going, then you see, ooh, there's water there, what are you gonna do, turn on a Ferris, and go up to Cedar, to go up to Athens, or go across to Hope, then come back around to Roosevelt, to loop back around? How are you gonna get these vehicles to come through there? And yes, the GPS may tell you to go to Tarpon Avenue, and come to Spring, and come up Grand, to eventually to Roosevelt, and all these jigger-jaggeries, but you're gonna be driving big coach buses through smaller neighborhoods, because people don't like to be backed up, and already there's quite a bit of backup traffic, so if you get somebody delivering, uh, to Laura Soaks or Mykonos, you got another bus behind there, and you got traffic. I just think it needs to be looked at in a large, in a better scale, and maybe reduce some of the impact that's potential, because with an underground vault, high tides, flooding, some of those issues I don't think have been properly addressed, thank you.
You, any, any further members of the public wishing to comment? Alright, seeing none, uh, we will close public comments. Uh, does staff have any rebuttal or closing comments?
No.
Would the applicant like to make any rebuttal or closing comments?
Um, so the issue as far as the underground vault system, um, my engineer and I worked with Rick, um, who does the stormwater plan for the city. Um, initially, the way it was designed, the, between raising the road and doing what we're doing, that vault system and the property is being brought up to the same grade as everything that my clubhouse and everything is. So, the, the vault system and the underground is coming up, so it will work, and it does work. So, that's the only thing I have to add.
Regina, while he's up, can I ask him a question while he's up there?
Yes.
Um, I did, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Could you respond to Mr. Waggonfor's point about like the unloading and uploading is?
Sure.
Yeah.
Both of the gentlemen have said they've visited RV parks. Um, you could go to a restaurant that has eight seats, or you can go to a restaurant that has five hundred seats, or a hundred and fifty seats. I can't comment where they went or stayed at. As far as, uh, a sewer dump, um, each site has a cleanout at it. And what that is, is basically at the pad, you take the sewer hose, you unscrew the cap like you do a, a cleanout at your house. If a plumber needs to come, he will go in front of your house, and there is a cap that goes in that they can fish and go all the way out to the sewer, or wherever they're at. Each one of these sites has that, there is no sewer dump. Some of these older facilities did not have the underground utilities in place to where the same thing at my marina, every one of my wet slips has a pump-out nozzle at the slip, so you don't have to go. Very few marinas on this river have pump-out.
And so I think.
So, but I'm saying, so as far as the cleanout.
Oh, I, I think you misunderstood my.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
I meant checking in and checking out.
Oh, checking in, checking out, so, I, I don't, I don't know where they went. Um, again, these, the, the traffic coming into these places, that's why we added that area to the left there. If people.
Drive-in?
To, to, to drive in to stop, uh, everybody's gotta walk somewhere to an office, no matter where we're at. Our office is right across, I mean, literally a hundred feet.
Drive into your site and then just walk to?
They can, it, it, if, if we know what's going on, there's gonna be motorized arms or gates, okay? They can pull in there, if we know they're coming, they can call, I mean, this is gonna be logistics, I don't think there's.
Apps and things, we have Airbnb of apps, like, you know, just to, because that would be a problem.
Yeah, no, I understand, but, but the.
They could check in remotely.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was gonna say, are, is what you're asking about, the remote check-in capability?
Cause that would cause a problem, cause that could really back traffic up.
The majority, the majority of these sites, Georgina, is, when, when you go to them now today, it's all app-based, you're a hundred ten percent. And you have to pay for that site prior to. You're a hundred and ten percent, and you have to pay for that site prior to getting there. But what they say is, when you get there, you still have to go check in and get your packet or whatever. Now, if you happen to come in after hours, a lot of times they leave your package there, they'll give you the code to get through the gate, and then you go to the office the following morning. Majority of these places close down at five o'clock. Our marina closes at five o'clock. These people have to be there before five o'clock.
Would they be checking in on Island Drive and not Roosevelt?
They'll be checking in on that, on that off, that little area that we added there on Island.
Okay, so.
Right there, and then they'll walk over to the clubhouse, they'll walk down Roosevelt into our clubhouse.
Waiting on Roosevelt, though?
No, no, no.
And then just another, if, when we make a motion, would less than sixteen be something, would it be worth it? Or is like sixteen, like, if I can't do sixteen, then it's just not worth it for me? Or would something, if it's possible with Attorney Kardashian, like, could he start something smaller and then come back for more? Like fourteen, or something like that, because of the?
Well, I guess this would kinda be my question, because, you know, you may be getting into some industry-specific type issues. When you design roads, you know, you have minimum road widths that you have to abide by under guidelines that are published in MUTCD, right? So I'm wondering if there's something similar that says this is the minimum width or size for an RV site, or if there's some industry standard publication that you may have used to develop this particular plan.
This was all done through the engineer, and we, right now currently, the jolly trolley and everything comes down that road. It's no wider, so what I'm saying is we.
It's not the road, though. It's, I'm not, I'm not really asking about the roads, because I'm assuming the roads were built to the minimum widths that are required under law. But what I'm asking about is if there is a minimum width for the particular paths.
So the sites themselves, the sites themselves.
Yes.
Some vehicles, the majority of the new vehicles today that are on the road have slide-outs, that they come out, okay? Normally, they will, it'd be on a driver's side or a passenger's side. Some of them have multiple slides on different sides. It's like a boat. Whatever the flavor is out there is what you buy if you like it. There is still room to get in between these. They do have awnings. I understand what they're saying, but these things are not gonna be touching each other. We looked at potentially adding more in there, as, based on the land volume. I believe it was up to like eighteen. I cut it back to sixteen, cause I don't want it that tight. So I have already scaled down on what I potentially had drawn up the first time. And the back parking lot back there, where the five parking spaces are, that was at one time I was considering on adding a site or two in there. And I didn't do that. So sixteen is a viable project for me to make it happen and to work, and it flows and it works.
Would they have parking passes?
What, who, the people when they check in? Well, I mean, they will come in, and then their cars, it's like our marina doesn't have parking passes. I mean, so the same situation.
City has plans to possibly do a parking lot across, and that's, I mean, wouldn't want that to infringe, cause that's part of one of the actual requirements here, that it doesn't, you know.
Understand.
Overload public facilities. So we'd wanna make sure that that's not, that people aren't, if that parking lot happens for the tourism industry, that visitors aren't using that and overloading it, you know, so.
Understand, yeah. It's the same situation. I mean, we have people come down here and they're in my parking lot to go down to this.
Around, so we're just trying to figure it out.
I got you.
All right. I guess we'll bring it back to the board for consideration then. I need a motion and a second. A motion must be in the affirmative, and then we can discuss further.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to motion that we approve Resolution Number 2024-06 as submitted with the conditions as specified by Attorney Kardashian regarding the ownership that was already clearly discussed with staff.
And the conditions put in by the city as well?
As well as the conditions stated as a city.
I'll second.
All right, do we have?
Wait, so there's two parts to this. The first is the conditional use approval, and the staff condition referenced is the total number of parking RV pads. Lodging units shall be limited to sixteen was the conditional use approval condition recommended by staff.
I added the condition with regard to the lease required, the six weeks under the current statute.
And that is the condition that you're requesting for the conditional use approval?
Conditional use, as well as the added condition with regard to ownership.
So the parking, that would be for the site plan. That would be for the second part of it.
So forgive me, I may have made an error. I only saw one resolution. If there were two, I just can't see it on the screen. So would you like us to back up and do two different motions?
It's one resolution, I'll defer. Yeah, it's one resolution, but it's two motions, because one is the approval of the conditional use for them to use the property in this manner. And then the second part is the site plan approval. And the site plan approval, there's two conditions that staff recommended. And if you look at the staff report, I'm looking at the very first page, just above the current property information, with respect to the preliminary staff recommendations. It is one resolution, but two parts.
Okay, so then I'm gonna amend, and I'd like to strike that previous motion, and I'm gonna like to make my first motion to be approval for 23-122. Would that be correct? Which is a conditional use?
Yes.
That includes the warrants that are requested within that conditional use?
Those are with the site plan.
Of course.
You're doing good.
Do I need some guidance here?
And?
You're good.
Am I doing good?
The warrants would be.
By the conditions, so.
No, the warrants were separate. There was two separate warrants that were requested. One warrant was, let me go back.
It's like you're gonna arrest somebody.
One warrant was with respect to the parking, and that was for the five off-site, that would be part of the site plan.
Which is the second motion?
Right, and then also the fence and the hedge.
Correct.
Which is the second motion?
Correct.
Okay, so would the first motion include the two conditions that have been carefully discussed?
Yes.
Okay.
The two conditions would be the RV parking pads lodging limit to sixteen, and then the, Mr. Kouskoudas is for the.
That they be six weeks maximum be included in any lease agreement?
I have some verbiage, if you'd like me to read that just for clarity.
Yes.
For that second condition. We are recommending rental term shall be for six weeks or less in compliance with the definition of seasonal short-term rental in Section 6.1 of the SMART code. Perfect, yes.
Understood.
That would be in addition to the condition on the screen.
And then I think their third, was it the third, that the, or that be the second motion with regard to ownership of the parking?
That would be the second one.
All right.
The other condition you may want to consider is a requirement for, we kinda discussed it a little bit. But I wasn't sure if you wanted to consider a condition with respect to the leasing office being located on an adjacent property.
That's optional for the next motion.
I would say that that would be part of the conditional use.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm actually not gonna opt in my motion to include the leasing office verbiage. So at this point, the motion to approve the conditional use with the conditions as requested by staff, and then the additional condition by Mr. Kouskoudas. Done.
Does that include in everything that you've?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, do we have board discussion?
Well, I really support the project more now than I did from what I read before. I do have a lot of concerns about the traffic, but I don't think that a traffic study is going to do anything different than what the engineer, whoever was already hired, does. I think that's a problem that we, and what Ms. Bukavales addressed is true. It's one block away. And the staff's just, it concerns me, because it's the staff's just outright blind spot of the fact that, oh yeah, it's outside the historic district, but it's like right here. And I understand that we have to look at everything just the way it is, but then again, we look at something like, well, technically, the SMART code says this. The SMART code, I mean, to go outside and try to even deviate from the SMART code once you're in it is outlandish. And then at the same time, pretend that this is a hard line between the historic district and right here, and we're gonna follow that. But then technically, the SMART code says this, but you know what? It's close enough. And you can't have it both ways, but that is a city problem. And again, I mean, I would like to put a condition on here for a traffic study, but I don't feel like that would really do anything different. I think they're gonna pass it, cause if Mr. Zimbella was here, he would be great to say, just because we can do something doesn't mean we should. You know, we're just riding up against people. And I'm really not against the project. I mean, if it goes as, you know, as it should, I think that it is a good idea. But again, it's really more of how it was presented to us, and again, I'm glad that, you know, that you came and spoke, and I knew your history with the town. But I'm more disappointed in how it was addressed to us, and that's an issue, again, that we have to fix with the SMART code and everything. But, I mean, as it is, I would support it, but I do have issues, and I don't want anyone to think, and I, Mr. Wagonford, your concerns and the canopy and all that, I don't know if it's, he started with eighteen and he went to sixteen, I believe that he did, and went down to that, and I think he's worked with staff. I know I talked to Pat today, and he's worked with TRC, went back a few times. I do have concerns with, again, it being right next to the docks, but I just don't feel like it's something that we can do to say no to it tonight, so in all the conditions I think are.
And not to beat a dead horse, but I think a traffic study would be flawed to begin with, because how do you remember, they had a traffic study when they did the apartment? Okay, and that was flawed?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and you know, cause when do you do the study? During season, during off-season?
Right.
You know, during the time of day? So any traffic study, I think, would be flawed. You know, we talked about, there was a concern about RVs coming down Dodecanese. Well, people come down with RVs down Dodecanese anyways, and they park in the parking lot when they wanna go to the sponge docks.
I see them all the time doing it.
Well, it's a mess down there anyways, so who cares? And that's the attitude I don't like.
Oh, I know that, I know that, but now we're telling, you know, people can't, you know, if you got an RV, you shouldn't come down to Canese, even if you go into a specific location. We're not talking about fifty spots, we're talking about sixteen. Probably not coming, sixteen people coming all in one day. You know, you know, so I think it's, and like, as I disclosed, I've known Ed for a while. I've represented him before in other matters. But I will tell you this, when you look at what he's done at Turtle Cove, what he could have done versus what he did, he could have built a marina that didn't have the curb appeal that it currently has, that blended in, that he took, he went over the top when he designed it and built it to have, you know, it look as nice as he could for the neighborhood. And so that just shows the quality of what he's done in the past, and there's no reason not to believe that he won't do what's quality moving forward.
And I would just comment that the traffic is the most serious concern for sure, and in my mind, that's more of a management issue, and something they're gonna have to deal with. Cause if they get three or four big buses stacked up out there waiting in line to get in, all hell's gonna break loose, and those people are gonna leave, and they're not ever coming back. So, I mean, the people that drive those things generally know what they're doing. As you said, they're like, they're like boaters, a few of them don't, but generally they do, and generally, they plot exactly how they're gonna get where they need to be, because they know they're driving a big vehicle that's worth hundreds of thousands of dollars. And as long as staff is very supportive and works with them to get them where they need to be, when they need to be there, so they don't stack up for the small number of buses that you've got here, I don't think it'll be a problem. Call for the question? You have a question? Yeah, if nobody else has comments?
Just a quick comment, Chairman, if I could. As stated by everyone, the traffic implications, and really, it's public safety implications, because if somebody gets struck, or someone's caused to deviate from the prescribed path of the road, bad things can happen. Traffic studies are very static, they're whatever period of time they're conducted, whatever conditions, and things can change in an hour, and be very different. Same thing with GPS, it may tell you to go a certain way, this is the shortest, this is the quickest, doesn't mean it's the best. And I've heard of GPSes running people down railroad tracks and such. What I would ask you to do, to be proactive with, is investigating all the possible routes in and out, and providing that in advance to the folks, saying if this is bad here, do this. Don't depend upon artificial intelligence to, you know, direct you per se. You have a good feel for what's here on a daily basis. If you can provide that, and say, these are option A, option B, option C, if there are problems, or some sort of condition, or something that prevents that preferred route. It is tight there. The historic district is historic for a reason, the residential district is residential for a reason. It's not commercial in nature, even though the little strip along the waterfront is. Everything else around it kinda is not, with the exception of Doge Canese, and that's, that can be the traffic nightmare that, like you said, turns people off. So anything you can do and provide to your clients proactively, I think that would solve some problems before they even occur. And that would be my aim. Thank you.
All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Swenson?
Hi. Yes.
Early?
With conditions, I would say yes, and I do wanna say this, if nobody minds.
It's too late to talk. It is a roll call.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes, with the conditions.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Kouskoudas?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right. Can we take five minutes?
Well, you still have, before we take the five minutes, let's take the site plan, cause that's got its own conditions attached with it.
Chair, I'd like to motion that we approve Application Number 23-123 site plan?
Hold on, I just wanna make sure. Is the motion with the two conditions, approving the warrants, and then adding the requested condition with respect to the ownership of the property and the five parking spaces?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And with staff's conditions.
And with the two typical.
Yes, yes.
Yes, it is.
And I would second that as stated.
Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Swenson?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Kouskoudas?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right, now, let's take a five-minute break.
Business zoning through here with Mobile Home Park there. This, of course, is Anderson Park across the US 19. And probably closest residential is Mobile Home over here, Sun Valley Mobile Home Park. And then on the north, you've got storage down here. You've got a small shopping center and the public storage facility. So that's where you are on 19. This is a future land use map. Again, this is a preservation wetland area. This is commercial general as much of 19 is. And you have the other surrounding residential and then park open space. This is just an aerial of the site. And this is an oblique of the site taken after the building was demolished. There are a couple of walls still up on two sides of the building. We'll see the site plan here in a minute. There's some old concrete pad they're going to be removing from the rear of the property. Obviously, the property will be rehabilitated to upgrade the facilities. The parcel shares a stormwater facility in the back with the mini storage that's next door. And they do have a shared access easement going down this common property line. So again, this was the site of a previous restaurant. And this is a, just an overlay of the survey showing. This survey was apparently done when the restaurant was still there, showing that they had a port cochere entrance at that restaurant that's now gone, showing the concrete in the back, the parking lot that was existing, and the entrance to US 19. This is the proposed site plan showing the, basically the same entrance with two-way traffic flow here. And then they've got some one-way traffic going on the north side of the property and some two-way access to parking in a couple of other areas. We'll kind of go through what they're providing for facilities. But basically, the building is, the previous building was about 5,900 square feet. They are expanding to about 9,600 square feet for the building, adding landscaping, including back by the stormwater pond, and adding three new handicap spaces. They have 48 parking spaces, so that's sufficient for their use. This is just a view, elevation view of the US 19 side, showing what the building will look like. This has a seating capacity of 84 seats. The applicant has stated that the usual will be 40 to 50, and the applicant is present to address the use. So this is just kind of a depiction of the floor plan and what that looks like. So this project is in conformance with the Land Development Code. Let me just say, the conditional use of game room, I feel like, I'm not sure the exact history, but I feel like that is probably conditional because, over the years, some of you may remember some of the issues that many counties, in fact, the last place I worked had with internet gambling, we still have. Sometimes people try to bring slot machines and open something until they get caught. We, you know, code enforcement will regularly, you know, see that kind of thing try to happen in different shopping centers. So that issue, I think, was something that probably made this, any type of game room a conditional use. We ended up running the game room at Whiskey Wings through conditional use. It's the kids' game room a few years ago. So that tells you really the kind of proposals that we do give. This is a bingo hall, the Belcher Bingo. It's been operating nine or 10 years. The applicant can address that over at Olympic Plaza. It is compliant with state law. The applicant has provided that information. There is a Pinellas County Bingo ordinance that they have to comply with. They also have that license and are compliant with that. So that's kind of the conditional use. The things that are included in there are pool rooms, arcades, and bingo, I mean, game rooms. That's what the conditional use is. So kind of interesting, older leftover part of our code, in my opinion. So the Land Development Code standards for highway business are found on pages five and six of the staff report, showing how the property complies with the Land Development Code. They are going to be reducing impervious surface, as I said, making some improvements to the property, adding the landscaping back in. Basically, it was virtually all gone from whatever the Mexican restaurant had, adding some landscape islands and a parking lot, that sort of thing. So it does conform with the code. This is an appropriate redevelopment site. You all have seen several sites. I think the three most recent have been car washes, redeveloping. So this one's a bingo hall, which is just kind of a different thing, but it's very compatible with that US 19 commercial corridor. It's well away from the adjacent or the nearby residential sun country is probably the closest. The applicant has stated they are going to be operating till 10:00 PM. I think the Pinellas County Bingo ordinance allows, like, operation until 3:00 AM. So they're well within that. They are well away from, you know, any kind of residential, at least 600 feet from at least sun country. So there should be, it should be compatible and well suited to the commercial corridor. It's consistent with the commercial general future land use category that it's in. It is not in a historic district. This is a redevelopment of a previously developed site, and we expect upgrades to the site, so there are no environmental impacts. And those site upgrades really are, it's a welcome redevelopment. Those are expected to maintain property values along 19 and keep those stable at least. The property is served by facilities, so the previous restaurant was served. The entrance is the same, so we'll be using that same entrance on US 19, so there won't be any impact there. The trip generation at seating capacity of 84 seats, I came up with maybe 11 new peak hour trips. So the previous use was a fast casual sit-down restaurant. So they did provide peak hour trips of 40, but they failed to account for the peak hour trips that they were replacing. So that was just something that they missed. So yeah, 40, I came up with 41 for Bingo Hall, which the trip generation manual actually has a specific category for Bingo Hall, believe it or not. So they were right on there, but they get credit for the trip generation from the Mexican restaurant. So like I say, at the 40 to 50 usual daily crowd, they're actually going to reduce the trips on 19. So this is expected to continue an orderly development pattern, net commercial strip on 19, and it does comply with the Land Development Code. It's expected to comply with building code, and we feel like health, safety will are being observed because this will upgrade really what was a deteriorated site. For the site plan, the project does comply with the comprehensive plan. We just touched on that. And with the Land Development Code, it is served by facilities, and it does comply with concurrency management system, and it's expected to comply with all city building codes. So we've recommended approval with one condition for the game room use, which is that they need to obtain a local business tax receipt. So they will just be able to terminate the one they have now and apply for that business tax over at the new address. And then we have seven, six conditions, sorry, for site plan approval. All utilities have to, need to be verified on-site by the applicant. The design standards for the site lighting and traffic control signage need to be on that final set of plans that they bring for a building permit application. We advise that a construction permit may be needed from FDOT. These redevelopments have been involving disturbance of FDOT right-of-way. There have been on and off issues with working around the FDOT drainage system, existing drainage system. So we want to caution them that they need to coordinate their project with the FDOT. They need to be consistent with the site plan, with their building permit. And this application came in before you all adopted the new timeframes for development orders. So this falls under that previous code, so they have one year to come in for a building permit. I believe they already actually applied for one and then found out they needed to go through site plan. So the applicant's here, but I expect they would like to proceed to construction as soon as they can, so that should be fine. And then just a note about public art undervalued of the project, just a reminder that that would be due if the project goes over $1 million. Are there any questions on this one?
I have a couple of questions. The current FDOT cutout, is that something that will remain? Is that, or is that the current FDOT access point?
They will, they will be using that access point as configured.
Okay, is there going to be a decel lane into the right turn?
No.
Okay, the FDOT would not, I mean, with the new FDOT requirements, they don't require decel?
I, when they coordinate with FDOT, we will confirm that, but I doubt it. I seriously doubt they will require deceleration lane there for this use.
Okay, with regard to the conditional use, you said the applicant, hours of operation will be till 10:00 PM?
Yes, the hours they stated are 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Okay, so to that extent, we can make that a condition as to the use?
We could.
Yes, you can. There's no problem with that.
All right.
Yeah.
I know, I was just asking.
And they note five days a week. I'm not sure which days, so they can answer that.
Be serving liquor or just beer and wine?
They, they can talk about whether they will be applying for that. We have not received any application for any alcohol beverage service, and I don't know if the current facility has that. Could ask the applicant.
Ms. McNeese, I have a question about the landscaping. Forgive me, but, you know, in all of these that we seek on before us, I'm starting to, I can't remember when it was, we were, we had a lot of discussion about canopy. Maybe it was at one of our workshops.
Yes.
And for people to just throw up a palm tree here and there, do we have any requirements in this particular case that it be a canopy-type tree that is planted?
Yes, landscaping is limited. The required landscaping and tree replacement numbers are limited to a total of 25% palm trees. Now, they've proposed all shade trees on this one. But you can't go more than 25% palm trees, and you have to group palm trees in threes. So if you're going to put one in, you're going to have to do a group of three.
Do you know what I've noticed, though, about a lot of new develop, I say, a building or a business? They'll plant the plants and the trees, but then they don't water them, and they die.
We do enforcement on that, and we do have active enforcement.
Okay, good.
Cases.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other?
Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
You do have to come up here to the podium.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Jonathan Kreider. My address is 1272 North Jasmine Avenue, Tarpon Springs, and yes, I've been sworn in.
Do we have questions of the applicant?
I just had some questions about what kind of food or beverage did you be serving?
As of right now, our current location does not have a beer and wine license. It's something that we thought about possibly applying for in the future, but they, we've talked to somebody prior with that, and because of how it's a type of gambling nature, they kind of, they just said, you probably won't get approved. So we never put, set forth, and that was back in 2010.
There's like vending machines or some kind of snacks?
Yeah, well, we're going to have a snack bar that's going to serve, you know, like sandwiches, you know, hot dogs, burgers, stuff like that. It's more just, it's quick serve, just to appease people while they're actually sitting there playing bingo.
Was there like a membership or anything like that, or just anybody comes?
No, just open to the public, nobody. And the current days are five days a week. We're closed on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And we've actually been in Tarpon Springs since 2009, so going on 15 years.
Any further questions? Seeing none, you can sit down for now. And does any member of the public here have comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll end public comments. And does staff have any additional comments they want to make?
No, thank you.
And the applicant, no further comments? Okay. Then we'll bring the item back to the board for consideration. I need a motion in a second. Oh, this is, this would be for the conditional use, right?
Correct, this is like the last one. You have your conditional use approval with one condition recommended by staff, and then the site plan approval with six conditions recommended by staff.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion with regard to the conditional use approval 2024-07 as to the conditions put forth by the city.
I'll second.
Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Then I will go ahead and make a motion with regard to the site plan approval with the conditions set forth by the city.
I would second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Wenson?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to application 2368, resolution 202409. It's site plan approval for property located at 332 Anclot Road. Do we have a staff's presentation?
Yes, thank you. This is site plan approval for a boat storage facility at 332 Anclot Road. And this will be an outdoor storage facility in the industrial general land use category and the waterfront marine industry development district, salon named the WD2 zoning district. So this would be outdoor boat and trailer storage for use by patrons. It would be a remote access type of facility, and it includes a boat washdown area. The site is located where Anclot Road turns, turns north, there right before bordering Tarpon Key subdivision there. So it's this little site here on the corner. And that is, again, in WD2, there's WD1B and WD2 across the street. Tarpon Key is residential multifamily, and then you've got some industrial zone property to the north and northeast. The, this is just an aerial of the site. Anclot Isles Marina is to the south, and there's Tarpon Key subdivision, and this industrial zone land is vacant currently. This is just an oblique of the site. There is a note in your staff report, there was a, these pictures were taken January 2023. There were some fleet vehicles parked on the property, but those are no longer there. So this was the site of the JRL Outboard and Marine Service. That was a boat repair facility, boat with accessory boat storage, that was there for several years, that was approved in the WD2 district. That was approved as a marina-type use. This would also be approved or allowed by right as a marina use, meeting that definition of a marina use. This is the site as it appears now, except that the fleet vehicles are not there. But this is pretty much how it looks with the entrance. It's fenced currently and with some opaque screening on the fence. And this is the survey of the site. The site is basically a lime rock surface with some millings and a couple sections of concrete where the driveways were for the previous use. And this is the site plan, so this is an outdoor storage facility, so it's a pretty basic site plan. You've got the parking stops here on the north side where people would come in, park their boats, and their, and, you know, be able to pull out and maneuver in this large area to be able to park, bring a boat over to the washdown to use that. There are no other facilities on the site, so there's really no reason to stay. People will be coming and going, dropping off their boats, picking up their boats. Basically, the applicant, I mean, there's not a whole lot to look at here, but the applicant is redeveloping the property and really upgrading and bringing the property into compliance with code and improving the property. So they are going to be reducing the impervious surface, enhancing the wetland buffer, we'll touch on that in a minute. They're going to upgrade the site to comply with the current stormwater handling requirements, which the previous site did not. The structures that were on that site, which have all been demolished, the house was from like the 40s or 20s, you know, it was an older site that was turned into a marine repair. So this will be upgraded for stormwater. There was an onsite sewage disposal system that's been abandoned, and that will be replaced with sewer service. And we're going to be reducing the number of access drives. There were four access drives along here. That's going to be reduced to two. The applicant still needs county approval for that, so that, we've recommended that as a condition. But, so there are some significant improvements to the site in this redevelopment. So the project is consistent with the industrial general future land use map category in that zoning district, and the application isn't compliance with the Land Development Code. The only thing, as far as the buffering, the code requires significant buffering. If you look at the table on page four, you'll see that the code requires an appropriate between adjoining non-industrial uses. So what you've got over at Tarpon Key is you've already got a wall over there on, along Anclot Road, and then the applicant is going to be doing some landscaping and the opaque fence on this side. The applicant will be doing the wetland enhancement, which includes some mangroves, removal of Brazilian pepper, and vegetating that wetland buffer. So they will be adding that as well. The only thing that is not currently in compliance on this site plan is there's no sidewalk shown. So Anclot Road is in planning, development, and environmental, what they call a PD and E study, at Pinellas County, this is a county road, to improve Anclot Road, including multimodal. So we expect sidewalks to be constructed here in probably the 2025 to 2027 timeframe. I'll say if they're doing the PD and E right now, probably construction will be in the 26, 27 fiscal year for them. That's, that's my guess. I think I put 25, 26 in the report, but that might be a little bit optimistic. We can't waive the sidewalk requirement. They would tear up whatever sidewalk the applicant put in in that case and redo it. We can't really waive it, but the applicant can't apply for a variance or pay the in-lu fee, so that's a condition is that they do one of those two that we recommend. The project is compliant with the concurrency management system. There will be no adverse impacts to city facilities. We have the ability to serve, it's either served or will be served with facilities. I've got quite a discussion, a little bit of a discussion about the parking there. Again, there's really, there are sufficient spaces, and there's really no need for extra spaces for a marina because there's no facility there, there's no building to go to, there's nobody to check in. This will be a remote access site. We did recommend a condition that they do have on the sign outside on the gate, the contact number. So if there's a fire, if there is vandalism, if there's, you know, any kind of issue, the police can call the owner, and owner, you know, can have that number handy if they don't, if they don't remember what it is right away. So that, that would be something we would suggest, and we do expect the site to be able to meet city building codes. So we have recommended approval with seven conditions. The first is restricting to boat and trailer storage only, basically the permit that's required from Pinellas County for the road, that would be the, for the, sorry, the site access, paying in-lu sidewalk fee or getting a variance. And then all the other usual conditions we usually do. Site plan consistent with the, I mean, building permit consistent with the site plan, meeting the code requirements, and expiring that one year. Again, this is one that came in before your code changed, so they have a year to apply for a building permit. Again, I believe this applicant is ready to proceed, so we expect the building permit to follow if this project is approved. Are there any questions on this one?
You know me, I have a question. With regard, you had mentioned that the boat wash, is that going to be a separate structure? If it is a separate structure, is there going to be retention of any oils or runoff or whatever with regard to when you wash a boat, whatever, you know, sometimes if you wash out a motor, et cetera, how is that going to be captured?
Yeah, so if you're going to ask me the technical and the project engineer Yeah, so if you're going to ask me the technical and the project engineers here, you could probably explain it better than me, but yeah, there was a bit of discussion back and forth. Um, there is a system that utilities, um, has approved without having those building permit details, they will review that to capture that. It also has to be covered, so it is indicated covered so that we don't have rainwater going into that system. So all those standards were required at TRC. This went, this went to TRC, oh, probably.
Would that be a separate?
Two or three times.
Would that be a separate building permit?
Um, it can, it can be part of the site work. Um, they may need a separate, um, permit for their meter. They've got to put sewer in if it's, I'm not sure if it's there yet, but a plumbing permit for their sewer, you know, it could be a separate.
So how do we assure compliance with, with that requirement?
The, uh, when they come in for their building permit?
I asked you if they would require a building permit and I, I don't think you, the, the answer was yes.
Yes, they, they would.
They had, that's why, like, the question was, do they need a building permit to build a?
Oh, I thought you said a separate building permit. So they do need a building permit. It may be, it may be one or more permits. So, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
And I, I suspect the water management district would want to look at the boat wash area too, probably.
Yes, and they have, I believe, received, it's in your packet, um, uh, an exemption from the water management district, so.
Um, Ms. McNeese, I have a quick question. They received an exemption, but yet if I heard you right, because it made me feel better, that, that water with any sulfates or whatever from washing the boats is going to be captured, not put into the sewer system or?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and there will be like a, a grease trap type system, I believe. Like I say, the engineer may be able to explain it better. But the, the system required by our utilities department when these things go in.
Thank you.
Okay, any other question?
The sidewalk, I was a little confused on that. Um, so Pinellas County is redoing the roads, so they can't put a sidewalk in now because they might tear it up. Is that correct?
They will tear it up, yeah.
There currently is a requirement, they do put one in, right?
Yes.
So then why would it say that in five years they can re- revisit and see if they need one? Because under the current code, they can't decide if they need it. It's a requirement, right?
Yeah, and that's a part of the staff report I should have corrected.
Cause I, I don't like how they're getting all these people. I prefer sidewalks.
Yeah, they either need to pay, put in the sidewalk, pay in lieu or get a waiver. I believe we can ask the applicant, but I leave, I believe they will, uh, apply for the waiver. If they don't get that, then they'll either need to put in the sidewalk or pay in lieu before the building per, before the site can be, um.
Is there a sidewalk across the street?
Good question.
There's something, something about they're near residential. Um, I mean, if you're trying to make it look better, a sidewalk makes everything look a lot, it looks terrible right now.
It's called government efficiency. You'll put in a sidewalk just for the county to come and tear it up.
Well, and I understand that, but that's, that's already in here, but then it's like, but then after that, then it's like, now it's up to you or currently it's not up to them and they have to do it.
So I, actually, when I reviewed this, there's nothing that I could find in your code that allows you to delay it for those five years. So actually the, that first, that A alternative is removed. So you'd only be looking at B for condition three.
Yeah, I think I put the corrected.
Yeah.
Uh, resolution and conditions. I just didn't change the explanation.
Then would they have to go to the board of adjustments for that?
Yes.
And no, I don't think there's a sidewalk across the street.
If you recall, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I was going to say, if you recall, they did Tarpon Avenue, the, there's other DOT and when the DOT was finished and GTE or whatever, Verizon had to come in, tear up what, what DOT had to do to place their lines. And then they finished and then the city had to come back, tear back that up, dig it back up so they could put their water lines in. So, you know, it's.
Well, I mean, whoever's paying for it, the residents, you know, sidewalks are essential. So I.
I, I agree with the sidewalk, but, but I sure wouldn't want to pay for one just to have them come up, tear it up two years so the county can put theirs, their own in.
Cost of business.
Yeah.
And it, it Ryland Homes, which is the adjacent residential on the other side, or it was Ryland, uh, it's since all built out, but they got a waiver on their sidewalk because there was wetlands there. And, uh, and, uh, so there is no sidewalk there. There's no sidewalk along the other side, uh, of Anclot Road as you go east from there until you get to my business. And then there is sidewalk just in front of my business and then there's no other sidewalk anywhere.
Let me say you drop your boat off and then you go and you make a phone call, someone to come pick you up. And then, you know, you're in the side of the road and people are just driving down. I mean, I just, every, everyone wants to beautify something until they have to do something that benefits a little bit more than beyond themselves and then find a way to pay it, it out. And, you know, you look on certain sides of the road, you can tell the difference between like Pasco and Pinellas and it's, a sidewalk makes things look nicer. And I've seen these applicants come up to the board of adjustments like, why am, where someone's going to sue me? Well, you know, that's just part of life. I mean, people are going to fall wherever they are and that's just part of it. But you want to beautify something until you have to do something that technically helps somebody else. And I don't know why we give people these waivers. I just think it makes it look nicer, but.
Technically, you're not giving them the waiver.
We're not giving them the waiver.
They can apply for it, yeah, yeah.
Who is the waiver applied to?
The board of adjustments.
Super, thank you.
And, you know, they're, they're, so the county's got, you know, plans to do like a multimodal. I think they're going to try to do some biking facilities. I'm not sure what the plan is. I mean, it's, it's a kind of a tight road, so it'll be interesting to see what they come up with. But we thought we were being, trying to be a little bit proactive to not have a sidewalk go in that's going to get torn up.
And they are looking at some significant changes.
Yeah, I think they are.
So, uh, trying to set an alignment that's safe is, is difficult to do at this point.
I just don't understand, like, there's like, it's just such a small part of the thing, yet we have, it's like three, we put two other, uh, subcategories for it and it's not even the main part, part of the project, just giving all these ways to get out of doing something. It's not, I guess it goes to the board of adjustments at this point, so.
Okay, any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, would the applicant like to make a statement?
Uh, John Steckel with MJ Stoves Consulting. I'm the owner's agent. Um, address is seven, seven, zero, two Cedarhurst Lane, Tampa, Florida, three, three, six, two, five.
And you've been sworn, correct?
Uh, yes, yes.
Thank you.
So I don't really have a presentation, but I think there were a few questions that there's some value in, uh, just kind of going through here. Um, I think first to the, the boat wash area, talking with staff, the utility department, that, that has to be covered to keep the rainwater out. The actual boat wash area is a depressed, concrete curbed area. So the boat wash area is going to be draining into that and it'll route through an oil-water separator before entering the sewer, the city sewer. So that, that covers the compliance with, you know, the runoff from the, the boats being I think there was that one, um, the storm water exemption, that covered just because of the reduction in impervious on the site. That was the environmental resource permit exemption. We also worked with staff for the storm water to meet the city's code. Basically have a swale routing around the property that captures the runoff, uh, treats that for water quality. Uh, and then, you know, just to touch on the sidewalk, the big driver of whether we seek the waiver or a fee in lieu ultimately is because of the construction project pending. So to build 500 feet of sidewalk at 15, $20,000 in cost, plus the maintenance of traffic in that process, to be torn out in two years and to be paid for is, is a difficult thing to swallow where the project went back to TRC two or three times because we were trying to minimize the cost for what we're trying to do here, which, uh, as Pat had mentioned, basically the same use previously, just cleaned up significantly and code compliant. So, um, we're also currently working with the county with the driveway permits. The sidewalk was mentioned by them as well as a requirement and we were discussing with them about the waiver and the timing of the project. So right now, the reviewers of the driveway permit are communicating with the project managers for this corridor project. So that's, we're actively involved with that as well. And ultimately, if, if we decide not to seek the waiver, the fee in lieu is there so that, you know, we're not fighting it, it's just from a, a cost standpoint and even the safety during the construction for, for users of the roadway. And I think it's important also to notice, to note that immediately east of our property line, there's a bridge that's about six inches outside of the travelway in each direction. So the sidewalk, even if it goes across the property, there's absolutely no one, nowhere for anyone to go, which is going to be addressed in that corridor project. So again, just a little background on, uh, whether we seek the waiver, uh, or the fee in lieu on that. If there's any other questions, we, Pat, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Seeing there is no members of the public here to comment on this item, uh, I guess we can close public comments also. And, uh, I need a, a motion and second so the board can discuss further if necessary.
Chair, I'll make a motion. I'd like to motion approval for application 23 dash 68. And I'm just going to do it in one fell swoop with all the special conditions. Now, I only see one application on my screen. Is this a twofer or is this a onefer?
This one, site.
Just a onefer, so I can say all staff conditions, the top and the second, as written, are included in my motion.
Do we have any discussion? I, I want to just say one thing because I, I drive back and forth past it many times a day, uh, since it's kind of on the other side of the street from my business. And in the last year and a half or so, it looks 20 times better than it ever has looked in the past. So, so it's already well on its way to being a, a much better thing than, than what it was. Anyway, uh, if there's no other discussion, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Wenson?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkudus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
All right, that brings us to application 2307, ordinance 202402. This is the amendment to the land development code that, that we asked staff to put together to shorten the time, allowable time period for development agreements. Would staff have a presentation?
Yes, I believe this was a discussion item at your last meeting, I think, um, that you all had, um, wanted to go forward, uh, ask the board to go forward with the change to development agreements, article six. And, um, the board did, uh, have a discussion with the planning director, Renee Vincent. Um, and they have directed staff to go forward with the changes that you all recommended, basically on page two of the, um, ordinance, the draft ordinance, um, amending the, um, code to have the duration of a development agreement not exceed five years with one extension by mutual consent of a super majority of the board of commissioners. Um, there was some discussion at the board about potentially evening, capping that at less than five years. Obviously you can do that with an individual agreement. It's just, you know, it cannot exceed five years. Um, we asked the planners advisory committee of, for Pinellas County that we sit on, uh, as part of Forward Pinellas, um, you can, you can ask questions of, of the other jurisdictions. We asked how long, um, people, uh, you know, these different jurisdictions have as their term for a development agreement. We got four answers back and this, this was what we got back. Um, as we've discussed before, of course, the state statutes limit is 30 years. So you can see a couple of jurisdictions go ahead and use that. Um, Oldsmar is at five years, so there's an example of one that uses the five-year term. But, um, I think that was a question and just, you know, what do other jurisdictions do? So it's, there's a variety of, of, um, terms that they use. So with that, uh, are there any questions and what would you like to recommend for the board?
I, I think we vetted this pretty well and I think our suggestion, regardless of what they do in the county, is five years and an extension with a super majority, uh, of, of the commissioner. I think, uh, gives any developer a, a reason to move forward or, you know, where they say crap or get off the pot. And, and, um, and so I, and, and if they wanted an extension, then they need to do a good job at convincing a majority, not a majority, but a super majority of the commissioners that, that, uh, extension is justified. So I think we did a good job in, in crafting or, or, or making that, that requirement.
I, I would agree and I, I think we had one really good example just a few years ago of why it needs to be five instead of 10.
Are you ready for a motion, chair?
Nobody else wants to discuss?
Chair, I'd like to motion that we approve and.
All right.
Approval is the action.
I do want to roll back just real quick on this because you guys have, um, and basically it's an ordinance in front of you. So hold on, I, I'm going to read it by title, even though it's a legislative item, still have to read it by title and then, um.
So if I may be so bold, how come you didn't have to do that for the other ones that also came with an ordinance? Or were those just resolutions?
With the resolutions, because the way you do your resolutions is by, by development order. To do that, you know, you can read it, but all the information on the development order is contained in what's being presented in, in your presentations.
Thank you.
So it's a, it's a little bit different. But definitely on a straight legislative item, this, you, you, you want to do this. So hold on one second, let me pull up the title. Okay, ordinance 2024 dash O2, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the city of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article Se- Six, Development Agreements, Section 96.00, Authority and Requirements, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and Providing for the Effective Date of this
Thank you. I'd like to motion approval of ordinance 20 dash, excuse me, 2024 dash O2, as carefully read by Ms. Curtis.
And, and just for the record, there's no public hearing because there is no public here, so there's nobody to speak on it.
And I will second that motion.
Do we have any discussion? Can we have a roll call then?
Ms. Wenson?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkudus? Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right, that brings us to staff comments.
Uh, no comments, I'm sorry.
Brings us to board comments and board member Vessi has something he'd like to briefly share with us before we close.
Um, and thank you for your patience. I know it's been a very long evening, but something serendipitous is happening right as we speak and it, there's so many things coming together in common and I thought it was worthy, trying to keep my comments really short. The thrust that it is, I'm going to refer to something that's happening on Klosterman Road that I think needs to come in front of this board as a regular agenda item of some type. I don't know how to structure that. That's right. So here's, here's, and the first what it ties to is at the last meeting, Mr. Kuzkudus was concerned about, uh, a property that's on Carlton Road that is in fact a preservation area by the county. Coincidentally. Coincidentally, there is an adjacent property that is a undeveloped parcel, which is just south of that, and if I was magic, I'd walk over there and unplug in my screen, because I've got the map up right now. But mentally go there unless Pat is so fast, or Ally over there can pop up there, and it's under City, if you do City of Tarpon Springs zoning map, you can do any zoning map and pop it in that bottom corner. So, there's an undeveloped parcel, it's big. It's owned by the school district, it has been for about twenty or twenty-five years. In their infinite wisdom, the school board decided about four or five years ago that they were just gonna sell this parcel. It is highly coveted as a development parcel, fine, but currently it's owned by the school district. And currently, as soon as the neighbors found out, they formed a preservation LLC or a board to try and save and purchase this property. This is not anything new, it happens, it happens all the time. Now, this is on our periphery because it doesn't appear to be in Tarpon Springs. But it is on the west end of Klosterman Road, the preservation district, or the, the group is called West Klosterman Preservation. I happen to live on Klosterman Road. Now, here's some of the other unique things that are coming together. Two months ago, this board saw the last of the review of the comprehensive plan, which was Parks and Rec open. And I just spent part of this meeting reading that program. And literally, every goal, objective, and policy refers to this piece of land. It's the strangest thing in the world than if you were to read it. Now, I think that this board needs to look at that, because it is like a choo-choo train way off in the distance that's coming at us, and this is our first opportunity to see something in live time way in the future, that has to do with all these elements that we have been wrestling with over the last five years. The review of our comprehensive plan, Parks and Rec, preservation of green space, needing some of our stuff, annexations. Now, you'd say, Justin, it's part of the county, what does this have to do with us? Well, what it has to do with us is that if we don't act, or I'm not sure what we would do, and if it is not preserved and it is sold, we are gonna see that developer right there asking or being told that they have to annex to the city, because to the west is City of Tarpon Springs, to the east is the City of Tarpon Springs, and to the north is the City of Tarpon Springs. It is already the City of Tarpon Springs, it just hasn't been formally annexed. So, I would just encourage you all to do your own homework on any way you want, it's called WKpreserve.com. There it is. I would like to ask the Chair of this board to, in an appropriate way, and that includes our counsel, Ms. Curtis, that we can bring this up as a regular agenda discussion item, just almost as a workshop item, to look at it more carefully, because we are gonna see it again, but this is our opportunity to get way out in front, whatever that might be. Okay, with that, I know it's been a long night. I don't know if they were pointing, or she was trying to pull it in, it's, it's an amazing piece of green, and then if anybody else would like to tail and make a comment, please.
I do, I do, because, you know, the, the thing is, and, and I appreciate that, because one of the things that, that we have to be is proactive and plan, okay? And anticipate what the future is gonna hold of this committee. We don't have a mission statement, but we kind of do know what our mission statement is, and it's a difficult balance on this board to, to, progress is inevitable, but to have the progress and growth that make Tarpon Springs unique as a community, and, and still maintain its uniqueness. I will tell you as I'm sitting here, that everybody I talk to who's moved into this town, that have come across in front of my desk, I ask the same question, why Tarpon Springs? Why did you just move here? There's any places in Florida to move, why did you pick Tarpon Springs? And almost verbatim, they say, because we love the, we love the character of this town. We love the charm of this town, please don't lose your charm. Please don't lose what you have, because they've seen it, you've seen it happen in other places. And what, I don't know what we could do as being proactive board members to anticipate, you know, especially enclaves or, or things that we know they're coming, are gonna come across us as far as annexation, because that's been a hot topic for us. You know, to some degree, our hands may be tied. And I think we, that's been mentioned, that our hands are tied in that regard. Unless there is a county overlay that, that's consistent with what our, our, you know, future land use is. But, but I appreciate you being, bringing that forward.
I've got a comment, as far as, two parts. People coming to the town, and they say that it's because, what do you expect them to say? They're all gonna, no, I'm not asking for an answer, they're all gonna say that. I know that, but a lot of people are coming here for lots of other reasons, and it's to make money. And of course, they're going to say that, you know, it's, we have to do our due diligence and look, look people up. I do not take anybody at their word for why they're coming here, there's lots of reasons why they're coming here. They didn't find us by accident, it's been years in the, in the planning. The second thing is, I have no problem with, with doing this, but we need to focus on what is in our city first. I have been asking for weeks to go over the SMART code, and I am at my wits' end. And Pat, I've called you last week, and this week, I mentioned it at the Greek Heritage, I mentioned it in a meeting here and at a workshop. We are worried, we cannot worry about what's outside of our city until we work from the inside out. We have the two most important districts, downtown and the Sponge Docks, and we, we cannot do the entire comprehensive plan and just ignore the SMART code. And I will not say, I'm, I'm going to email the board of commissioners tomorrow until it gets on our agenda. I am done, I know that there are plans in the making, I know that's why it's delayed, I know it's why this went through, I know that there's other things coming through, and you're just like, well, you know, and I, I'm not gonna, you know, there's no conspiracies, I know how things work, and people want to get their stuff through before that even comes up, but for Renee to mention it at that meeting, and then to just pretend that I haven't been asking for this, and we cannot be stepping outside of our city until we deal with what is inside of it first. And the SMART code is too important, it is, you know, what affects the city out, of course it does. Just as I mentioned tonight, write a block outside of the SMART code, we're gonna act like one doesn't affect the other, and yet we're gonna be worrying about something that's not even in our city. You know, and I'm glad that we're looking forward, but we need to protect what's inside of our city and what we can actually manage first. And I've been asking for this for almost six months at least. So I have nothing against that, but we, we have to deal with what we can first, and what is right in front of us, and the SMART code needs to be fixed, I don't, I don't even think we, we should have ever had it in the first place, I know we can't get rid of it, so we need to fix it. And it, it means different things for different areas, it should be more constrictive for the Sponge Docks, I don't care, whatever downtown wants, they can, we can talk with them and have a workshop with them. But we cannot ignore that, that we just went through the whole comp plan, and that so the same thing that happened with Cohatch can just happen to them again. What does that say to the downtown district? We just did the whole comp plan so that we can change, you know, for the betterment of our city, but we didn't touch you guys, you know, so it's gonna happen again, just good luck. Oh, but we're gonna worry about this preservation over here, and what could happen. You know, I'm sorry, but I'm not gonna stop on this, I'm gonna continue to ask every meeting until it's on our agenda. That's it.
Alright, anybody else have any board comments?
The only other thing I would say is, what we just did with regard to the, the development extensions, you, you may see that the other communities in the county mirror what we just did, what we just voted on, five years with a supermajority.
Well said, and thank you. Thank you, staff, for listening to us, and we've been talking about that and working on that together, thank you very much.
Yes, that was a, a quick response to what we asked, thank you. We stand adjourned at nine forty-three.
You were right.